Mr. Duvall.
President.
Mr. Tynne, here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mayor Benjamin. Thank you.
Alrighty, so, um, Ms. Kaufman, if you first?
Uh, no.
Eric is first. Okay. Alright, no introduction needed. Eric, come on in.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to be back with you, so, we're gonna talk about other post-employment benefits of OPEB. Last time I was here, we walked through various levers or options you can make to the plan. This time, we've kind of packaged those into a few options for you, and kind of quantified those. So, with that being said... Okay. I've kind of talked about that while we've been here. And page four, just to reiterate, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I may play one on TV, but I don't win their legal advice. I'm an actuary.
You don't even want to play one on TV these days.
I probably don't even want to play one on TV, that's right. So, I'm an actuary, and, you know, we'll model some numbers for you, but, you know, the numbers we model have been based on our best guesstimate or best estimate, and, you know, reality may be different than that. So, let's talk about where you are currently, and I think this is very important, that you put in a defined dollar benefit in 2012. At the time you put that in, that saved you roughly $110 million. So, based on what I looked at, you cut your OPEB liability almost in half when you put that in. And that defined dollar limit has caps of $1,130 for pre-65 retirees, $840 for their spouses.
Can you repeat that? I missed the numbers.
Okay, yeah, you put in a defined dollar benefit or a DDB in 2012, and you save roughly $110 million when you put that in. It's the first bullet there. I'm sorry, I'm on page six.
Six.
Everyone good? Okay. So, I just wanted to kind of give you the history. You know, you put this in, and the first time I met with you, I was saying, you know, you were far ahead of the curve because most entities have not capped their OPEB costs, like you had done. However, and I'm gonna go down here to the second phase of the bullet, last year, you have not been maintaining that defined dollar, that DDB. You've been paying the premiums, and so you haven't been passing on additional costs mainly to your pre-65 retirees. And if the policy isn't changed, we will have to value what you're actually doing for OPEB liability purposes. And I'll go through these on the next few pages, but essentially, your OPEB liability is probably about the double, at least. So, you're probably looking at going from at the bottom of roughly a $190 million OPEB liability, to where if you don't maintain your policy, almost $380 million. And going in the future, you'll see it gets into the billions, with the B. So, these next few pages just illustrate that. On page seven, we show you the actual cash flows by each group, of what the benefit payments are gonna be, on the dark green are your current retirees, and then the lighter green are your current actives. And as you can see, the future hires are way out there in the future because they've gotta get to retirement before they start receiving those benefits. This assumes you maintain the DDB. So, look what's happening if you don't. If you don't, your curve looks like most government entities I consult with. Most people have this curve that's upwardly sloping because those benefits are increasing with medical inflation. And I'm assuming this is 4%, which is very generous. I mean, we know that medical inflation is going up higher than 4%, but I just wanted to illustrate for you just what, even that 4% it does.
But the 4% is a figure that's used over a 30-year period.
Correct, yes, sir.
So, it could be over 30 years, we would average 4%.
That's true, yeah, right.
You can't look at it as a one-year.
That's true, yeah, right. So, if you look at medical trend, you know, what we call the ultimate medical trend rate, it's usually somewhere around that 45% raise.
Right.
So, long-term, but, you know, I've been doing this like 20 years, and we've been saying that ultimate trend is gonna be five for those 20 years, and I'd be doggone if it's not going up higher than that most of those years.
You'd affect the bad years.
Yep. But the point is that if you don't maintain the DDB, that, you know, you're gonna have this upwardly sloping benefit payments. So, now, let's look at the liability. You know, and again, I talked about, and I'm on page nine here, when you made the change, you know, you put your liability in half, and you also kind of stabilized the liability where it essentially almost remains relatively flat, if you look at it, kind of like the benefit payments. And you can see it's roughly $200 million, we'll call it today, and expect it to maintain around that point. But if you look at page 10, this is what I was talking about getting into the billions, that if the DDB is not maintained, then you're looking at in 30 years having a liability of, you know, 1.2 billion in a billion-dollar range. So, instead of having a liability of roughly $200 million, 30 years from now, we're looking at having a liability that's probably a billion more. So, I know that, no, I've gone through this before, but I just wanted to kind of set the stage of why we're here to talk about that. Okay? So, now, let's look at what kind of options do you have available? So, we've labeled option, option one, two, and three, not because of that's your first option, second option, or third option, but what we've done is labeled an option that has the most significant impact, or the most significant impact on your current work group, all the way down to the ones that have the least impact. So, just to highlight option one, so what this option does is it assumes that, okay, you've got $48 million sitting aside to quote "fund" OPEB. So, what if you just took that $48 million and said, "We'll fund OPEB until the money's gone"? You know, again, that would be the most significant probably thing you could do besides just totally turning it off, then what happens to that? You know, of course, your liability is limited to that $48 million, but the issue is that that would only allow the plan to operate for five or six years.
Would you put that $48.7 million into a trust, or would you leave it in Jeff's bank account to use as cash flow at the city?
I think Jeff wants to suspend it, so we're leaving his bank account. I'm just kidding. No, it would, honestly, for this purposes of this option, it really wouldn't matter much because you're gonna be taking out roughly $9 to $10 million a year, so you wouldn't be able to invest the money really that long-term anyway. And also, given that the restrictions South Carolina has on investments, it just really wouldn't, for this option, it really wouldn't matter, because literally, what we're assuming here is you take the $48 million and you just drain it down essentially.
And so, Eric, you're saying after, your five- to six-year estimate is based on kind of the current trends of what we're planning?
Correct.
So, five to six years after it's depleted, then we wouldn't have any more obligations with the retirees?
You would have any, right.
The retirees.
Correct.
And, I guess, do we have an estimate on knowing where we are currently with our retirees? About how many more would be in the system at that point?
I can, you've got roughly 700 now. I can tell you for the five years, if, after this meeting, I can go look up and tell you exactly how many. We have that number, I just don't have it at the top of my head. But literally, you know, not only would your current retirees be impacted, then, you know, pretty much anyone who's active today probably unlikely to get a benefit, you know? And again, this is the most significant option out there. So, I started with this one, not saying this is the first one, but just to give you some perspective of, you know, so essentially, that would just cap your OPEB liability at $48 million. The other thing I want to point out with this option too, and this gets into all these options, we're assuming that you establish what we call an HRA, a health reimbursement account. You know, I talked to you about your current policy, how you're paying the premiums, but the health reimbursement account, you would deposit that $1,100 or $840 to a dependant into an account, and they will go out there and then purchase their own coverage.
Right.
So, that would essentially get you out of having to pay the difference in the premiums and all those. So, all the options I'm gonna show you, assume that you establish what we call an HRA.
Eric, that these options were put together, I understand, based on interviews that they've had with counselors, will, one of the options that's not up there is eliminating spouse coverage altogether, not just for the ones that can have covered, offered coverage elsewhere, but eliminate it, and spouse independent, and only ensure our employees.
Correct. So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And that would be significantly more savings for the city if we did that?
It would, if, so under option one, so looking at the other option, if you did that, it would add a little bit more savings. I don't know if it would be what I would call significantly more, but just because, if I remember correctly, I think your current dependents you're paying somewhere in the million and a half million dollar range, I think. And so, if you just totally eliminate them, you would add that. Now, going forward, you know, it would add more savings, just as more retirees, as more current employees retire.
Is there an equity issue here between the employees that are single and the employees that have spouse independence?
It's a good question.
Based on, well, before you answer that, clarify the question, because we're talking about retiree coverage, we're not talking about active.
Well, it's just as important on the retiree side as it is on the active side.
But there's two differences, because we had this discussion earlier. The discrepancy is so, a single employee can cost us more than a whole family in any year based on their claims. So, unless you have the claim data, you can't answer that question.
Well, the liability is more if you have four people.
Not necessarily. So, a family of four makes no claim in a year, but an individual has two renal failures or something like that, it costs $300,000, how do you say that's not? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
An actuary doesn't look at claims, an actuary looks at what's possible, based on a census of years.
Yeah, but we're making decisions on historical, we have historical data for creation. So, to say, I think that's a loaded question. You gotta have the data to stand up to that.
I'm actually gonna agree with both of you about that. You're right.
You running for office?
No, sir, I am absolutely not. I would say that, you're correct, we would look at the claims of those dependents to see if they're paying their true cost. So, that does go into effect, and I would say the way you're planning to set up now, you're paying, you know, $1,100 for the retiree, $840 for the dependents. So, I assume you put that in to try to balance that equity issue. You know, again, that was put in before I got here, and we haven't looked at the claims, but that's why I assumed you made that differential, but, you know, so.
Well, you know, and I think there's a big line of distinction between pre and post-65 as well, as we know. I mean, our pre-65s are our biggest liability at this point, and our biggest claims.
Right. We're on page 13. So, that was option one. I just keep going through the option, and then we've got another page that kind of makes it a little clearer. On option B, 1B, we assume that you eliminate post-65 coverage for that same group, and also you remove that restriction of having to limit the amount of the $48.7 million. The only option that limits the liability to $48.7 million is the first option. Then, option 1C assumes that we would now restrict it to only those current active employees who are eligible to retire before the end of the year. So, the first option kind of affects everyone. Option 1B, we start removing post-65, and then option 1C, we only restrict it to those current active employees who will be eligible to retire end of the year. Go on to option two. So, on option two, we don't touch the current retirees. Here, we look at the current active employees and your future hires. Again, we establish the HRA, we eliminate that spousal coverage for those who have credible coverage, and for purposes of our numbers, we've only assumed 25% have credible coverage. So, essentially, the numbers we've modeled, almost essentially, they've been removed anyway. And then, we extend eligibility and put an age requirement to get the benefit in option two. And then, in option three, we look at only for future hires. What if you don't touch any current retirees, the current active employees? What if you only do changes for future hires? Option three just takes it together all the way, right? Like, what if we only offer the benefit, don't offer anything to the future hires, pre or post-65? And then, option 3B only offers our pre-65 coverage. So, on page 14, this is probably a little easier to see it, you can kind of compare the options altogether. And again, you know, I said that we arrange these by which has the most impact or the most change. You can see the first option impacts everyone, just because, once the fund runs out, everyone will be impacted. Option 1B only affects those future hires, current active employees, and those pre-65ers. We will remove post-65 for those current employees. And then, we go on and down the list. And you can see option two actually impacts your current active employees and your future hires. Then, three is only future hires. Any questions kind of about what the mechanics of the options are? We can go on to look at some of the numbers.
Let's see the numbers.
Okay. So, I'm gonna skip page 15, that just talks about how we quantify the numbers, and again, I'll show you on immediate impact, which is really like the impact on your budget next year, then more intermediate, and then longer-term impact. So, here are the numbers. So, again, option one, as I said, you know, it's the most changed, so it has, of course, the biggest impact. And so, I just want to talk a little bit about this $19 million of savings that, on option one, what we assume is that you wouldn't put any money in your budget, you wouldn't fund anything for retired medical, you would take that $48 million out of the trust and totally use that to drain down the fund. So, that would open up two avenues for you. You wouldn't be funding the $9 million in benefit payments that you currently do, nor would you be funding anything in the budget. So, that's why that number is so large, that if you did that, essentially, you would almost essentially be getting out of the retired medical business, but you would just use that $48 million just to pay claims until it's gone. So, again, you know, that has the biggest impact. Option 1B, where you eliminate post-65 coverage, you see immediately, next year, you're gonna save about $9 million with that option. And all the way down, and option three, the option for future hires, they don't have any impact on the immediate budget because those employees aren't hired yet. So, now, I'll skip all the way to the far right, look at the impact over the 30 years. So, if you look at, you know, option three, you know, you would trim your OPEB liability, you know, roughly, and these are in today's dollars, you would trim the OPEB liability roughly, you know, $28 to $30 million with changes to future hires. Then, option two, you would almost create about the same amount of savings if you touched current or active employees. So, I'm gonna pause there and kind of let this soak in, and see if we got any questions on any of the options or any of the numbers we have here.
On C, where you say "fund up," do you have a projection on that?
So, on what option 1C would do, you would just continue to fund the HRA, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're saying here, is that, I just want to delineate that from option one, where you aren't doing any additional funding. Option 1B and the rest of the options, you just continue to fund HRA.
So, above and beyond the $48 million?
Yes, yes. So, in theory, any option besides one, the $48 million is still there to, you know, to pay for other benefits or whatever, you know, the city's pleasure is. We don't have any impact on the numbers, I do want to talk about what the impact on the employees will be, and some of the retirees. So, let's go through the healthcare delivery. I do want to just highlight a few things here about the differences in the market. You know, we talked about your pre-Medicare, your pre-65 retiree versus the Medicare retirees. And what we, so let me first define what we call the individual market. Currently, now, you have a group plan, you know, employees go through the city to get their coverage in a group basis. With ACA, we created this whole individual market, and there are kind of two exchanges. There's the public exchanges, what the state has, and there's also private exchanges. So, I refer to that as the individual market. The individual market for pre-Medicare retirees is not as stable as it is for Medicare retirees. You know, we can get into all the reasons, a lot of them we list here, but that population there, you know, again, that's your highest-cost population, and I'll show you the claims and the premiums, but that population is not as stable as the post-Medicare retirees. The Medicare retirees, you know, first of all, Medicare is the primary payer, there are several public and private exchanges for them, and their premiums aren't increasing as fast as these pre-Medicare retirees. And we list a lot of the reasons kind of why here, but that is just the premiums I would just want you to take away, as we get into the numbers, to start thinking about that.
Do you think that the pre-Medicare market is gonna stabilize and be restrained in the future years?
What I've been told is that that pre-Medicare market is just still in such a state of flux, because, you know, that is just our, for everyone, that is our highest-cost people in that, that market is just still hasn't stabilized. So, you know, when I show you the premiums, you'll be able to see it, that they're gonna have high premiums, you know, talk about that trend rate of 4%, that group is probably having trend, you know, double of everyone else. Now, that's not to say that at some point it could, but from what I've been told by all of our experts, is that that market is just still in a state of flux. Any other questions on pre-Medicare versus post-Medicare? So, we did what we call a footprint, to look at all your pre-Medicare retirees, you've got roughly 400, where do they live, and what choices of plans are available to them? And so, you can see, most of your employees live in Richland and Lexington. You've got a few sprinkled out, you know, throughout the country. But if you look at the choice of plans, the thing I want to point out is that, look at the number of platinum plans offered. There's almost nonexistent for where most of your retirees live. Most of the plans for the pre-Medicare retirees are these bronze or silver plans.
Except for Florida.
Except for Florida. You know, sunshine state, right?
Did we mandate that all of our retirees move to Volusia, Florida?
Yeah, I think you can do that. You've got that one retiree who would have options everywhere, right? He's got 13 platinum plans, lots of silver plans.
And the cost is lower.
And the cost is lower.
Cost is lower.
So, no state taxes, but you've only got one retiree there. But for most of your retirees, you know, they would be subject to either silver or gold plan. But look on the far right, the number of carriers available, too. You know, you notice, we've talked about this, that, you know, the state of South Carolina, there's only one carrier available, so there's one game in town. You've got several different types of plans, but if, you know, you prefer something other than the Blues, you've gotta move to Volusia, right? Maybe that's why he moved, she moved. So, this just gives you a picture of where your retirees live, and what the choices are available. On the next page...
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
194, is that all, or is that a...
That's all you have in Richland County. You've got 136 in Lexington. Now, we're only talking about those pre-65ers.
Right.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, but, you know, if you look at, that's roughly 230 out of, you know, that's over half of them live in those two counties, you know? And then, you know, they start scattering out. On page 20, I just kind of show you some of the details of the different plan designs, but the thing I want to point out here to you is, look at the far-right columns, where we show you actual premiums. So, these are the premiums that are currently, as of 2018, on the exchanges. So, if you look at, if your employee, your current plan is between a gold and a platinum plan, so it's not exactly a gold, it's not exactly a platinum, it's right between those two. If you look at where a current pre-65 retiree in Richland County, they'd be paying roughly $1,250 a month for premium. And you can see the premiums fluctuate, like, you know, that gentleman down in Volusia County?
Pre-65.
Correct, pre-65. You know, that gentleman down, or Mrs. down in Volusia County, you can see their premiums are a lot cheaper for that same gold plan.
So, and I recognize that Florida has a very high retiree population, move to Florida and that kind of stuff, but, I mean, what's the rationale for that? Is it they have more providers, so the competition is bringing the cost down, or, I mean, what is dictating that? Is there anything we can learn from them?
They, well, you know, it is, retirement state, preferable retirees, they do have more providers. We look at that other page, and in Florida, they had like five providers. So, I'll go back there.
Is that probably competition that's bringing that cost down?
Yeah, you've got the competition, and if you've got a market where there's a ton of retirees, they've got more to pull it over, and just more experience. I mean, that state is just, you know, most people retire from other places and move to Florida. Then, you've got other places in Ohio, which also has a lot of carriers, and, you know, when you've got more competition, you tend to have those lower premiums. But it's also based on, also, the last thing I'll add, is based on the health of that general population. You know, I live in Atlanta and here in the south, and, you know, our eating habits probably aren't the best, so if you start looking at, if you mix Florida, maybe you've got retirees from all over, and maybe, you know, their habits are maybe different than ours, who, you know, stay primarily in the areas where we're born and raised. Answer your question? Okay. Here, we look at, I talked about the premiums. So, if we go to page 21, I just want to show you what the impact would be on a particular employee. So, your average pre-65 employee is age 58. Here, I've just shown you age 60, just for illustrative purposes. So, if you look at the total premium, I talked about that 1,200, you know, roughly $50, I mean, the $1,242 for the gold plan, right? So, your current defined dollar benefit would pay them roughly $1,130. So, they would be net out-of-pocket $122. Now, you know, you may say, "Well, $122 doesn't sound like a lot," but compare it to the $16 they're paying now, you know, they're gonna be paying roughly $100-plus dollars Now, again, this is for retirees age 60, you've got some retirees that are younger, who would pay less, and you've got some that are older who would pay more. At the very oldest end of the range, those age 64 retirees, they would be paying roughly $100 more than this. Now, I'll call it roughly, we show those in the dependencies. Yeah, they'd be paying, you know, roughly $250. So, you're looking at, if you send them to the individual market for the pre-65, you're gonna go from paying roughly $16 to, you know, electing a similar plan, you know, roughly And, you know, it's just something to point out, so let's assume that you had maintained your defined dollar benefit last year, right? If you look at the premiums of your current plan, and these are equivalent premiums, it's not far off from the gold plan. The difference is that the city's picking up much more to cost for your retirees, and so, they're net out-of-pocket, you know, their premiums is a lot smaller. So, it's, this just kind of highlights the fact that, you know, not maintaining that defined dollar benefit, the city's taking on much more of the cost, you know, and the retirees paying less. But if you were to send them to the exchange and implement the defined dollar benefit, then they would, you know, be paying more, but the premiums aren't that much different between your group plan and the individual market, a little bit lower.
How do we collect that $16 now? How do we collect that $16 premium per month from a retiree now? Because they get in state retirement.
That's health, that's health insurance, that's a health insurance premium. We have an administrator that they pay, they write their checks to, or they get it, it's out of their checking accounts.
Okay.
Yeah, so they pay their premiums like, you know, they were employees, they would take out their check, but because they're retirees, they either send a check in to make a payment, or they have it wrapped from there. And then, we, the money's given back to us. We have an administrator that helps us with that. And of course, that $16 is the lower one for us, you know, because we have...
Right. And, you know, the base plan, we're calling, that plan, like I said, between the gold and the platinum plan. And a retiree could have the option of buying a lower-tier plan, and, you know, and essentially paying, you know, no out-of-pocket dollars, they bought a gold, or very little if they bought a silver plan. But to buy what I'll call a quote, you know, almost equivalent plan, you're gonna be paying a hundred-plus dollars more. Any questions on this example before we go on? So, now, let's look at your Medicare retirees. We go through the same analysis, and, you know, not much different. You know, most of your Medicare retirees are still, you know, right around these two counties, in Richland and Lexington, you know, almost the same as the pre-Medicare retirees. But if you look at the number of plans they have, there's a lot more options. You know, and I talked about that market being much more stable. So, you know, I think some of you in insurance, and you know, insurance companies are in the business of risk management, and if they feel like they can take on a risk that they can manage, they'll offer you a lot of plans and offer you coverage. And that's why on the pre-65, you don't see as many, but on these post-65, you see much more plans, just because with Medicare being the primary payer and all those, you know, insurance companies are in that game. So, again, they have much more options. We'll go through the example, let's see if anybody had any question around that. So, in this case, and this is probably the silver lining for your Medicare retirees, so currently, they're, they're paying roughly $216 for the current plan, and I'll skip through all of that, because they, the premium is roughly $516, the defined dollar benefit is $300, so that leaves them with like roughly $200 out-of-pocket, $216. They were to go to the individual market, and I've shown a plan that's kind of similar, you can see that they would actually be paying less, you know, significantly less. And that's probably a function of probably two or three things. One, you know, that market is much more stable, two, you probably... Two, you've probably got some cross subsidization where some of those retirees are subsidizing the pre 65ers, and doing this would break that. So those Medicare retirees, you know, within theory on the individual market, you know, probably do better, or much better. So, you know, someone asked me if I had good news this morning, there's a good news.
And Eric, you have, you have down there, the example is a someone age 75. That change if someone is Medicaid area eligible for 65?
No, no, so, so I just took the average of your post 65ers, I'm sorry, I think they're around 76. I just wanted to show you what your average employee would be like.
Right, I just want to make sure, I'm just, from my knowledge, I just want to know, would this likely be the scenario for someone that's 66, 67?
It would actually be better.
Okay.
So, so, thank, good, good point, I need to point that out. So, if you're younger than this, these numbers will get better, right? Like, so, so your out of pocket costs will go down, those who are older, right, will be paying a little bit more. So let's say, I, I don't know if you'd be, still be living if, to, to get to a equivalent premium on the Medicare market, but, you know, if you're, say, 85, you'd be paying, let's just call it about $100 more than this, but still less than the current plan. You know, and, and there are some changes, I'm not going to get into the prescription drugs, Medicare has a five tier system, you've got four, so, so there would be some changes, but, but overall, they could get an equivalent plan for probably cheaper. So, so now that I've gone through all this, so what's next? So, you know, and, and in my mind, you, you've kind of got two paths that I'll choose, or I'll, I'll kind of say, you've got, what I, I won't call it, I call it do nothing for sake of here, but, you know, no action, you've got two choices if you don't act and take one of the options today. Either one, you can increase those, maintain the DDB and increase the premiums. Or, you don't maintain the DDB and your OPEB liability goes up effective June 30th, 2018. It's going to hit the balance sheet this year because of gap of age 75. So, it just, I hate to be cynical, but, you know, if you don't maintain the DDB, then we will have to value what you're doing and the OPEB lobby is going to go up. Okay, the other option is, we went through all these different options, you know, 1 through 3, and 3A and 3B, you know, you can amend the plan. And, you know, and that comes down to kind of, you know, what are your desired level of savings, and who do we really want to impact? So that's kind of why I structured it like that, to show you, you can impact everyone all the way down to the future hires. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm not running for office, so, you know, those are policy decisions that, you know, that you all have to make in conjunction with your staff about who's, who's really going to be impacted. We quantified the numbers for you, but, you know, but what type of savings are you looking to get next year, and then who do you want to impact? Once you decide which one of those paths to go down, you know, you've still got some communication to do. You know, if, if you're going to maintain the DDB and increase premiums, you need to be getting out ahead of that now. I've talked to Pam and Missy and Jeff about, you know, making sure that you communicate that, so it's not last minute to your retirees. Or, you know, Jeff or, or Jan would need to be on the phone with your rating agencies if you don't maintain the DDB, because, you know, they're going to wonder, why is this OPEB liability, you know, two times as big as we thought it would be? Now, if you do amend the plan, you've got a few more decision points to make. I talked about pre Medicare and post Medicare market, how which one was more stable, and we kind of showed that in premiums. For the pre Medicare, you probably didn't want to decide whether or not you want to send them to the individual market, or do you want to keep them in the group plan with the HRA? So what I mean by that is that you could continue to offer the plan through the city, fund the HRA, but let them buy the plan through the city, but your cost is still limited to the HRA. That, that would give them a few more options and probably, and then in a way you can kind of blend in with active employees, the lower that cost a little bit. Or you could just send them to the individual market, they pay those premiums I showed you before. And then with the post 65ers, the biggest question is, do you go with the private exchange, which was, has more options, or do you go with the state exchange, which has one carrier? So, you know, a lot of decision points, you know, the first thing is, you know, big path are you going to go down? You know, do you want to make some action and move on some of these options, or, you know, you're looking to amend the plan? From there, you know, there's, there's other things that you've got to consider. And the last thing I'll leave you with, and, and I'll stop talking, is that if you're going to go to the individual market, you really need to be getting out ahead of that right now. Because it takes a while to get that implemented, get into carriers and all that stuff, and to communicate to retirees. So, so literally, that decision needs to be made, you know, sooner rather than later. In, in the ideal world, you would be getting into that in May, which is next week. So, so that, that's all I have for today.
Legitimately, this is really a Pam question. So, if we were to, you know, process for them, would they still meet with, or whoever's doing open enrollment for us, and they would help the retirees find a plan, or have what that was?
Probably not. Probably what we would do is we would find a navigator, somebody who is, is an expert in helping retirees.
So, we probably wouldn't be doing the enrollment like we do our normal enrollment for our active employees. We'd probably be consulting with a navigator. Those people are, have the expertise to help people pick a plan, because you've got to understand, it's really going to be an individual decision. So they'll have to look at what kind of medications the person is taking, what kind of health issues they have, and then help them shop for a plan that's going to fit their particular, and what, how much money they want to spend with the DDB that we're giving them, and they would do that on an individual basis. So we'd probably hire a navigator, and there are lots of them out there that do that, but that's what we'd be looking at doing. It wouldn't be a normal enrollment profit, process.
How, how long does this type of change over take? One year, two years?
Well, we would be, we would be doing it for January of next year, of 2019. That would be the plan, is to make that change effective with the new plan year.
Well, I was kind of looking at the education process for the employees.
Yeah, and that's what he was talking about, the earlier you start, the better. So we would start in, like, in next month, identifying a navigator that we're going to use, and start, you know, having meetings, sending out letters, you know, all type of mechanisms to communicate that this change is happening for the retirees.
Eric, is it in this plan that, or something else I read over the weekend, where we changed the plan, we have 55 retiree, age 55 retiree?
That's one of your options.
Yes, it is. So, option two, and options for your future hires, all those options, we add additional requirements. We make them have to work two more years to get the coverage, and we put an age 55 minimum age on it. I'm on page 14. So, so two and 3B both, both have those.
And conceivably, you know, we could make that an option, even if you, with any of these. That could be an option, that could be something that we require people to, to do for eligibility. Yeah, I guess it's a little closer to the whole rule of 90, and the retirement eligibility's the same. Right now, we, we, we often have to explain to people how they're eligible for retiree insurance, but they're not eligible to retire, or vice versa. Because some people, because, because right now, you either have to have 20 years of service if you were here prior to 2009, and then after that, you have to have either 25 years or 28 years of service in order to be eligible for retiree insurance. So our, our employees who've been here a long time, they may have 20 years of service, but they may not be old enough or have enough years of service in order to retire. Or, they have enough years of, they have enough years of service and age to retire through the retirement system, but they haven't worked for us long enough to be eligible for our retiree insurance. We get that quite often, where they say, well, I'm eligible to retire, and we go, yeah, but you don't get insurance, because you haven't worked with the city long enough. So that's, that's something we deal with right now. 57.
The first and most important question we have to answer as a council is, are we going to stick with the DDB?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That's the driving force.
Right.
Are we going to put a bi- a billion dollars worth of liability on the city in a few years, or are we going to stick to it?
Right, because we haven't, you know, when, like Eric said, when it was created, the whole concept was that anything that exceeded that, the increases, retirees would pick up that cost. And, and it was, it's, it's been a big increase. I mean, we had $3 million in one year increase. When you divide that by 400 people, that's a pretty significant increase, so. So we have not really maintained it, and haven't increased it either, we haven't increased the DDB either.
And that, that becomes the thing, I mean, the reality is, of course, when it's, it's very personal to you, no one wants to pay more, no one wants changes, but we've got to, I mean, this isn't sustainable, and we've got to make a decision and stick to it, because those costs are just getting higher and higher.
So, our hope is that with this information, that we'll be closer to making some decisions about which option you all are going to choose, of course, you know, the sooner the better with that. And then we'll have to go through the process of either doing something formal to solidify the decision that you all have made, and then make the, make the steps to move forward with either education or whatever the next things that we have to do. So, it, it is a, unfortunately, it is a decision that needs to be makes, made sooner than later.
Page 16 is the, is probably the easiest page to look at what our decision will result.
I was going to say, are y'all going to discuss and make a decision today?
I'm ready.
I'd like us to have some dialogue with retirees as we promised. I recognize the time sensitivity that.
Yeah, I was just asking, I've got about 30 minutes, and I'll be back. When we both go out, it reverts to you.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, I just wanted to know if there was a decision going to be made.
You got a quorum.
No, but once you, in the rule, once you have a quorum.
There's only three, quorum's only three now.
We, we, we lose, we lose a quorum every, every time somebody goes to the bathroom too, so it's all right. You establish a quorum, you have a quorum.
Because you're not voting, so.
Yeah.
I just have a status conference, I'll be right back.
But back to the timing issue, some dialogue with retirees and others before we do anything.
Well, I think we, we need to decide on, on an approach, and then sit down and discuss that approach, and why, and what the impacts are. I don't think you can go in there with a, with a haphazard of options, if they would get anywhere.
You know, I, I, I agree, Howard, you probably can relate to this, but I just went through that, well, and Dina and I just went through this with Niko, my son, because his disability, he turned 26, we had to see if we could keep him on my insurance. It was, we got two letters, one was very vague, and Dina freaked out because they, they said, no, they disenrolled him. The big old question was, what are we going to do? How can we, what can we find out there to match what we already had? Could, and, so, it just so happened that a standard letter came to us before they actually reviewed his history medically and so forth. But they, they, they allowed us to maintain him. So I could imagine what some folks are going to have to do if, depending on what we do, it's going to impact them, and they've got to. That's why I'm asking about the timeframe for getting all this stuff done.
I think we got time, I think we just got to make some decisions, and, you know, post 65 folks have more options than anybody else, they'd be better off having their own spending account, because they can save money by switching plans, and that's been proven.
Right.
That, that population, and part of it's the population growth. The retirees in Florida outpopulate the state of South Carolina. So, I mean, obviously, there's a reason why those premiums are cheaper there.
Well, that too, in our, our post 65, they have a group plan.
Right, right, and it always has been that way, and that's been the problem.
Exactly, and it, it, you know, and every year, we've increased our premiums to that population, and honestly, they come back and they say, I could get a cheaper plan on my own, and I say, yes, you can, and you probably should, but, but they don't want to.
But I think.
Because it's the experience of the pop, of our small population, their health, their, you know, all their factors.
If, if we, if we end up having a facilitator help them place, and create that, they'd be much better off now and in the future.
They certainly would.
And, and we're talking about the, you know, the, the 400. Our biggest challenge is, is, is how do we handle the pre 65?
Right.
Population.
Right.
And do, you know, are you making spousal changes and things like that? And, you know, are we enforcing that if you have an option at another job, you know, you have to take that insurance first and foremost, because that's where you're an active employee? You know, the, at, the cost, you know, is a discussion, you know, some of the retirees, the pre 65 have said, well, I mean, we should, we should maintain our current premium. Well, the current premium, we can't. I mean, it's not sustainable, so, you know, looking at these options, I think we've got, you know, we've got solid options that start at the pre 65, post 65, and then we move all the way down. But I think we're going to have to narrow it down to two that we can come together with and then move forward, and it may be a combination of both. But I do think we need to.
Educate them.
To dive into this and make, make some directional decisions.
But we also need to make the changes in our retirement plan, so we get to the rule of 90.
If, if that's an option that, that we want to do, again, that changes, you know, the eligibility change has to be made for.
It keeps them on the regular plan until they get at least 55, so when we have a 10-year window there.
That's correct. You do have, that, that does make a difference. We'll, we'll certainly.
So obviously, you know, we need everybody here to have that discussion, so, you know, do we want to, to push it for the next work session? Because I don't know if Reverend McDowell's going to make it this morning. So, I mean.
Talked about having some non-Tuesday meetings as well.
Yeah.
Which I'm wide open for, depending on everybody's schedules.
But I think for us to get through, to make these decisions, have a place in plan by January, we need to make a decision in the next 30 days. Right, well, I mean, there's a whole lot of factors, but.
Decisions that y'all make on this will affect every single budget, especially the general fund that we're going to go over later today, along with the ones we've already seen on Modern Sewer, Stormwater Park.
So does it, next week, do we meet next week? We do, don't we?
May 1st.
We are May 1st, just that evening, I believe. Is that correct, Erica?
I'm not going to be here, and you aren't either.
We're going to have a short meeting, see if we can break the record.
So that next, that next meeting is the 8th.
You can't do that. No, Ms. Wilson, we'll be back next week, so you can't be breaking records.
Not on your watch.
I got to hold my record down.
So, can we try to, to schedule something early on the 8th? That's a Tuesday, isn't it? Oh, Tameka's not here.
What about, what about, I mean, what about afternoon on the 3rd? I mean, excuse me, on the 2nd, is that possible?
Wednesday the 7th?
I, I'm not here, I'm out that, all the way till Thursday. But I mean, I could get on the phone if I needed to, I mean, I can. Friday the 4th.
You just want, you want to see what you can negotiate, look at everybody's calendar, take a, take a look at everybody, and you can kind of work on that, and just, unless it's be flexible, seeing everybody is here. so everybody is here.
I am.
I think we could set aside two hours just to work on this.
Yeah. On the fifteenth?
Yeah.
We may wanna meet prior to that though as well if we can.
Yeah. But I'll be, I'll be, I initially, I'm, I'm very flexible on the fifteenth. We can have a slumber party if you want.
We can also meet after the thirty.
Be right back.
Freshen. Getting down to the short roads now.
All right. The brains are here, so that's fine. Let's go.
So, next step, Erica's gonna, we're gonna work on another meeting.
And the off-Tuesday date, it sounds like.
Any more questions for Eric? Are we all good?
Thank you for that. You do a good job of explaining a very difficult subject.
Eric, a question.
Yes, sir.
You, you, you're from Atlanta solely for this?
Yes, sir.
You're not, you're not in town anywhere where I could maybe.
Solely for you.
Grab you in a corner somewhere.
I, I'll be here through this afternoon, but, but if.
Not today.
Yeah, if, if y'all have a time that you want me to come down, I'm willing to do that. But we, you know.
I, I think anybody else may be okay, but I'm still trying to absorb the full impact of this and make sure I really understand your models.
Mr. Davis, we can meet with you as well, staff.
Oh, can you do it? It might be good to also.
We, we, we can put, or, or at least we can have him on speaker if he, if he can't travel. We can, we can figure out something like that.
And we could also include Council McDowell.
Certainly.
Who's here today.
Yeah.
I spoke with Ms. Wilson this morning. We can include her as well.
I think that's.
Okay. That'd be good.
Yeah, I'm here to a pleasure.
I, I don't, okay, so you've got, since you've got two other people, why don't you check with them and see what their schedules and I'll try and work around theirs. We may not need to hook you, but maybe staff.
Yeah, and he can certainly be on, on a conference call if we, if we need to, because that might, that might have more flexibility with dates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Our next item will be hospitality tax funding proposal. We'll get some set up. Okay, I'll talk with Evan. Well, Ms. Wilson will be back all week, so all of us can.
Okay, yeah. My, my, my. So, let's look at several, several dates. Maybe work around theirs.
I don't care. Just give me something.
Uh, which memo?
The one that was attached to the agenda.
I didn't see this this morning.
It was in the agenda. It was attached to the.
No, I didn't see this. He's not here yet, maybe. Everybody's mad with us, so.
They're mad at you, Sam, not me.
You better figure out a way to converse with, like, Mongo and that group.
Uh, Mongo, I'm not, they just put an application in like everybody else.
Yeah. But see, the problem is, you know, but the gitches, in the course of the years, they have submitted, I have, maybe.
They didn't wanna get organized. They didn't wanna do all that. They were happy with what Miriam was doing. They wanna use it, they wanna use it to fix up the place like everybody else is, which comes to a question of, you know, we need to decide in this hospitality what this tax is gonna be used for and what are our, our leeways and, and taking the time to look into some of it and what we've been reimbursable. I think we gotta, we gotta, A, number one, audit our reimbursables. Number two, we need to, to, to make a decision on how this money is spent along with, you know, using the guidelines, but then our own guidelines, because right now, it's the wild, wild west. If you go take a look at what we've been paying and how it's gotten through the system, I don't know.
That's, that's one of the keys to the proposal that I wanna talk about this morning.
Well, we need, we, we, we need to look at that because I think we've got two challenges. You've got some newbies in line, folks that wanna get in line. Then we've got the groups that I'm kinda sensitive toward that have been coming to the table, but leaving basically with nothing.
Well, we're funding the same groups over and over and over.
Let's, let's go with Missy and never start this thing off.
Smaller groups need it. Smaller groups need to get a break.
Have a discussion.
All right. Well, the, the first section we really wanted to do to help you get started and warm up on this conversation is talk a little bit about what the city's existing program, or existing grant program is. And so, there are three methods right now for funding hospitality tax events. Regardless of any allocation made, whether it's for city purposes or external or agencies' use, those funds must meet state law and, and public use. So, we're trying to make sure we cover those bases as well. The first section is called, is referred to as council-funded line items. Line items are those, are those agencies that, they still submit an application, however, they are not reviewed by the Hospitality Tax Committee. And they are still also reviewed by, at this point now, DeeDee reviews them out of the, out of the grants office. Allocations typically are flat from one year to the next. There have been some fluctuations over the past several years, whether it's for a specific, specific project or something, but typically, those, those line items stay, stay the same for, for multiple years. The biggest thing about line item agencies and the reason why there were line item agencies from the beginning is that these groups had a specific tie to the city, whether it is through the fact that they are in a city-owned building, such as with Adventure and Columbia Museum of Art. They have a contract or upkeep of the building, such as Historic Columbia, who operates, the city owns the historic homes, they own the interiors, and also, the city has a contractual agreement for operation and maintenance of those facilities. There's a statutory relationship, such as the Columbia Music Festival Association, and then there's a city-sponsored outreach or community enrichment, such as Famously Hot. There have been some groups added that, I think, one or two groups that have been added that aren't necessarily tied to one of those things, but that's been in some recent years that that's occurred. The next group is actually the Hospitality Tax Committee and how they make their recommendations. I'm, I'm not gonna go into that too much. DeeDee's gonna come up and talk about that, the hospitality tax application process and the committee process a little more in detail. The newest section is council allocations. In recent years, especially in light of having some significant fund balance and available savings, city council has made direct allocations for specific use. Typically, those have not come through any kind of great application process or review process, questions made and council has considered that allocation. Of course, as surplus, as you are aware of, has dried up pretty significantly with regards to having excess surplus. We do typically end the year with some surplus because revenues have come in a little more aggressive than what we projected, although our projections, we have gotten more aggressive in our budget projections. And then also too, there are some, some agencies that either don't submit the required request to carry forward. City council many years ago allowed for, that if a group doesn't spend their money in the first year, they are allowed to carry it forward for one year. They have to make that request in writing by May thirtieth. If they don't, those funds are forfeited. So occasionally, there are some funds that are forfeited, either because they didn't request it or because they've extended their, they've gone their past or full two years of the allocation. And that's true for any of our grant programs also, like when there are funds for community promotions as well. The other important item to add is that these funds are not typically treated as reoccurring like it is with some of the line item agencies. Those are reoccurring allocations. These groups, it's a one-time hit, although I think there has been some confusion in the past over those allocations in the sense that they are reoccurring or that they somehow will be renewed again for the next year at the same amounts. It is completely dependent upon there being surplus funds. Or, as we've discussed in the city, in the budget preparations, as we give to you the amounts available for hospitality tax, we divvy it up, the, the three pots based on what has been done in the past. Of course, before we pass the budget, or before you pass the budget, city council wants to change how those, how these, how they, how they process, which we're talking about today, then it's subject to, you know, those changes as well. So that's what that process is for the, the three main groups. Of course, there is a transfer to the general fund that's not listed here, and then there's also debt service payments, which of course are oblig, obligated, so those have to be made as well. The transfer to the general fund is based upon there being expenses that the general fund performs that are equivalent or that are eligible for hospitality tax.
Mostly police.
Pardon?
Mostly police.
Actually, mostly public works and parks and recreation. Police.
Supporting.
Right. Supportingly. On that same note, we'll talk a little bit about what state law is with regards to state, with hospitality tax. I'm sure you all are very familiar with hospitality tax state code. Of course, it's related to tourism-related building, buildings, including but not limited to civic centers, coliseums, and aquariums. Tourism-related cultural, recreational, or historic facilities. Beach access and reneurization, don't we have any of those unless we count the shores of Lake Murray? Highways, roads, streets, and bridges providing access to tourist destination, which is where public works comes into play. Advertisement and promotions related to tourism and recrea, tourism development, or water and sewer infrastructure to serve tourism-related demand. We have not utilized that function, although certainly, there are opportunities for that as well. The next section refers to how we can also utilize funds for police, fire, emergency medical, and emergency preparedness that are directly in attendance to those tourism-related facilities. So that's an additional allocation.
So, the eligible expenses, what, so if you look at the state code, I mean, obviously, is there more detail to it? So.
That's the bulk of it. I mean, it's pretty verbatim from the state code.
So, I guess the question.
This is the actual code here.
So, the question to, you know, to me is, as we get into this discussion, is, is what's qualified as reimbursable expense?
Sure.
State code does not say anything about reimbursable expense. That's a internal accounting function that our auditors have to sign off on.
Well, there has to be eligible expenses, correct?
Yeah. It has to be eligible according to the things that it can be spent on.
So, what's eligible? What, what's the, I guess it's a gray area and we need to define that? Is that where I think we are? Because, you know, to me, where I struggle is, is doing an audit and looking at, at several groups. Paperwork, the reimbursables, I mean, we're paying for Mountain Dew and, and water and cups and things, toilet paper for their employees, which I don't think is reimbursable. I don't think that was the intent of the money. I don't think gift cards are intent. I don't think flower bed liners may or may not be intent. I don't know. I mean, these are questions we need to define. I mean, what are we paying for? And, and I think each group, especially when we're talking about the, the hospitality areas have different, you know? The bid on Main Street was created to run block by block. Well, now, we're paying one hundred percent of that block by block. And, and looking at those expenses in there, I question them. I'm very concerned why staff, how, how they got signed off on. I mean, making, you know, late payments and others, and these are all things that are in our records that are right there in front of us. And so, as we're going for a change, I think, one, we need to audit. Two, I think we need to have some strict and specific guidelines. And if we're looking to fund a group as, as, as a line item, I think it's gotta be very specific on what that money can be used for, because right now, to me, it looks like it's a little of the wild, wild west out there, that we're, we're not, I don't know if it's on both ends or the relationships have just gotten so well that we just sign off on everything. I don't know the answer. But when you look at something and you see a receipt for fourteen hundred dollars for gift cards from Publix, you gotta go, whoa, timeout. What is that for?
The state, the state law gives you the uses of the local hospitality taxes. And what I would like to do is get off of the thing of looking at the receipts. If we say that a, an event is, is eligible, and it is an event that is bringing tourists into the city to spend more age tax and it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars, then we sign a contract with the recipient of that money and say, we're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars and I would like to give it quarterly and not get into the business of looking whether they bought Mountain Dews or Linas for things. You, we sign every council meeting. We go through a consent agenda that spends millions of dollars on contracts, and we don't make these contractors bring in receipts for gas and.
That's because it, but.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we do. Have you, have you gone, go, go in that office right there and go look at what we, what we make, Bo Autry, not Bo Autry, what's his name? Hughes. Go through. I, I went through those, those receipts. It is very specific. He's spending it, getting reimbursed, and it is a line item. I mean, detailed, and some of those bills, things aren't eligible. We aren't doing that. We need to know where that money goes and what's the, if we do this, what is the requirement or what's the penalty if, if they misspend the money?
Well, we. We claw it back and we don't fund them again.
But we, we are where we are now because I think along the way, we tried to make a decision to, to not have to get into the weeds on certain items.
Right.
So, we got flexible. But if, if we're gonna do that, Daniel, then I think we need to agree on, or, or staff, what, what is an acceptable expenditure and what is not.
Well, that's what I think we, if we're gonna overhaul the system, I think we need to be specific because we're getting to a point now where we're gonna spend all the hospitality money on clean and safety, and that was not its original intent. I think it, part of it, I think it makes sense for, for areas, but at the same time, you know, and, and I'm, I'm gonna pick on city center partnership today because, you know, we created a bid to create a block-by-block system, but now, we're funding three hundred thousand dollars a year of hospitality towards that. I don't think that was the intent. That hospitality money should be for marketing and their, their collection. The people are paying a tax and a tax to cover that cleaning, and it's, that's not what's being used, and I don't think some of the money's being spent correctly. And I don't think it's, you know, and then we, I think we need to look at what these agencies have in their portfolio. If somebody's got, you know, seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars, why are we giving them additional funding?
Well, I agree with you that.
I mean, I think we need to know what, what they pay their, the employees. I mean, because I think that all depends on, on the cost. I mean, we're supposed to be helping multiple, hospitality money's not just for five groups. It's supposed to help grow our arts and return, and there are some groups that, that have a huge economic impact. I just don't think we've given people a clear line of how that money should be spent. And I'm all for looking at and doing a different system, but I want specific guidelines. I wanna know what the return is. I just don't think it, I don't think you can just write a check to somebody and say, oh, you know, we're gonna give you a hundred and let's hope you do everything okay. I just don't think that's the way you do it. But doesn't mean you can't do it, but if a group doesn't wanna accept the guidelines, then they don't need our money.
Well, what the guidelines would be, you, you perform what you say you're gonna perform. If you're gonna put on Art Savista or, or any event, then we, we think that this is worth two hundred thousand dollars from the city of Columbia, you do that. But we don't need to go behind them and say, well, you can buy light bulbs, but you can't buy the, pay the electric bill, or you can put a.
Hospitality money's not supposed to pay for that kind of stuff anyway, right?
Operation and maintenance of all these things that are funded by that.
So, you're okay with us buying drinks and paying late payments and gift cards and all that kind of stuff?
I'm, I'm okay with us funding a particular project at a certain amount and letting them do it.
Well, let me ask this. I, I, I think like in, you know, as in other businesses we, we do, we do determine what is. is, what is an acceptable expenditure and what is not.
Well, how are you gonna make a list of everything that's acceptable?
I think you can have a guideline, but I mean, if, if I'm sitting here and, so, is it okay for hospitality group, so if I'm ex-ballet, it's okay for me to buy an ad from another ballet's thing and just shifting money back and forth? I don't think that was the intent.
And I don't think that you're able to do.
Right. But I don't think, it's just like, I mean, you think it's okay that we're, we buy gift cards with hospitality money?
I don't know what the gift cards were used for, but what was the event that we were funding?
Oh, operations. There was no event in it. That's the thing. That's what I'm saying is, is we're not, we're, we're funding with an open, with no guideline in it. That, to me, is what makes me nervous. And then we've got groups, you know, look, I have to get reimbursed for any travel expense or anything, I have to fill out forms. I mean, that's standard operating procedure for every business in America. Why should we just blank-check it?
Didn't we, hospitality was audited?
Yeah, we did one two years ago, and periodically, our external auditor also pulls things out.
So it's his call as to when he does it and where, and where he will go. Is that right? Or do we point him and sort and direct it?
We do have a new internal auditor that could.
So.
We have an internal.
Our, our external auditor audits to what we say we're going to do. He took the guidelines and documentation that we had on our website, and he, when he did the audit, he audited to that. That's where he found some expenses that were ineligible, and he's only gonna audit to what we say is our policy.
Right.
He's not gonna make our policy.
Right.
And that's what's up here, was to talk about, in addition to state pilot, state code, the other guidelines in terms of what exactly.
I read your state codes.
So to do what, what you wanna do, how do we do the two things that need to happen? One is establish guidelines. You know, an event is an event, and then there's, there's operations, and that's where I think the line is not being clear.
What would trigger an audit?
We, we would have the right to order any of these events that we.
Well, yeah, but I'm not, I'm not saying do it just because we have the right to do it. I'm saying there should be certain triggers that we.
But if we don't give people guidelines, how are you gonna?
Guide, guideline.
How are you gonna say it?
City guidelines are that you have a financial statement, you have a current 990.
Which not, which I don't think, but one out of the six that I pulled are current, and we still write checks to them.
And we do, we need to tighten that up. But if you have a financial, if you have a 990, if you have a clear plan of what they're gonna perform for their money that is, they're gonna get out of the age tax, I don't think we need to get into the weeds to look at whether they're buying plant liners or Coca-Colas or what. They're provo, they're using the money to put on an event or some, something that's gonna bring tourists, and we define tourists as people from outside of the city limits inside of the city limits. And we don't need to make these organizations continually save every dollar's worth of gas that they buy.
But Howard, i- i- if, if you owned your own business and your employees came to you and just said, just, you know, just give me an allowance, you know, and I'll just spend it however you want, you're not, your accountant's not gonna go for that.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
But that's what you just said!
No, I am saying that we would have a contract that would say, for X amount of dollars, you're gonna perform this, and that's where we would stipulate what, what event or operation they would do with the hospitality tax money.
Okay, I, I think we could, and probably should, kinda come to some kind of an agreement on what is, what is auditable and what is not, or what we.
I think we have to decide what is an eligible expense and what's not, and then they need to craft their budget on the event around that.
We, I think we can do that, but, you know, my, my overall concern over the years, even this morning, has been, how do we spread more of those dollars around?
And that's what I was proposing, a group three, that would be the innovative groups, that the new groups, that would, would get a certain percentage of the tax.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But then we go back to the question of what is an acceptable expense and what is not.
Because that makes a difference in funding and what's available.
And that, that charge, are you talking about that charge being to the, the committee, like the committee would have to preserve about 10, 20, 30% of the, of their allocation to these specific groups?
Well, I won't, I wouldn't say 10, 20, or 30%, but some percentage, we, we would establish a pot of money that would be used for the third group, which would be the small groups that are new, that are innovative, and they would receive funding because of their new status.
Yeah, and then I, I don't know that we've been consistent with, with, again, what is allowable and what is not. The question, for example, of administrative expenses.
You can use it for operation and maintenance of any of the things that are listed.
What about salaries? Or a portion of, of an exact salary?
For salaries. You could use, certainly use it for police and fire and operation if, if we, if we funded normal, and they, they had a contract to bring, to provide a festival and promotion and a website, I think that we could give them hospitality tax and.
A portion can go toward salary.
And portion of it could go toward salaries.
And I think that's, some of those are the questions that fall, not just under the state hospitality tax, but also public use. That was one of the issues that we ran into with one of the other agencies that's now split their, their allocation, so.
What? What was the issue?
Public funds have to be used for public use, so you'd have to be careful.
Funding of salaries, and then also to funding of organizations that this is their sole source of funding.
Well, and it's not in my proposal, when you talk to Ms. Reese, who's the consultant from Texas that's helping the cultural plan, she says we should not fund more than 50% of the cost of.
Salaries.
Any, any event. So.
So how do you do that with a contract?
You'd find out how much.
Got to audit.
The event was, be, I, I don't have that in my proposal. You, you would find out how much their budget was by their 990, and then you would say, we can't go over X dollars.
At least for existing groups or existing festivals?
I would think that with, with a number of them, we've exceeded that.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something. That's, that's not in my proposal, but that's something that Marjorie calls.
Something for discussion. I don't have a problem with that.
I think we, I think we're funding some of the groups too, too much.
Well, if we were to discuss that and, and agree to adopt that approach, we, we spread the dollars a little further.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd have more dollars.
It also probably gets to sustainability too, the organization and the event.
Yeah. I think the theory was that they would be matching the dollars that the city provides. If you're gonna have a $100,000 event, the city ought not give more than 50,000, and they would have to raise the other 50,000 to make them sustain.
I don't know if you wanna go over it, but we do have what the guidelines are that the city has, as well as, that's our, you know, our guidelines. DeeDee's prepared to discuss that piece, and then also the committee process, and then also the reimbursement process, if you wanna discuss that.
I think we're kinda spinning our wheels discussing with three people here, at least two of them at odds.
No, I don't think we're, I don't, I, I don't think we're at odds. What I think we is, is that to establish your proposal, we, we need to have stronger guidelines.
I think she's got it.
The PowerPoint we gave you does summarize the process. I don't know if you wanna ask DeeDee any questions about the process or go over the process.
Yeah. Is it in her PowerPoint, Dan?
Starting on slide six.
Page five.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So basically, I would have three, three groups. The larger groups, not only would they get, have contracts, but they would get a two-year commitment, and we would true that up every year, the way they do multiple-year budgets. As, end of the first year, you would, they would be getting some, but you would true up the amount going into the second year, and so you'd always have two years going on a contract. So groups like the Nickelodeon that have to make commitments into the next year, won't have to wait until June or July to find out how much money they're gonna have for, for the, for the next year. They, they would know that they would have some funding.
Thank you.
The other thing that I think would, would be good is the group four, which would be capital projects group. We've got about $400,000 to $500,000 that's rotating around out there now, and I think we ought to be able to keep that money and, and plug in different groups to use that money for capital expenses. I know there are two or three groups out there now that are asking us for capital funds, and we need a system to evaluate and put them in line to use that $400,000, $500,000 as it rolls back into our avail, useful availability there.
Right now, all of our capital contributions to, to the groups that receive hospitality dollars are hospitality dollars, not, not city.
They're hospitality dollars, and so we could keep that pot of hospitality dollars and set, set up a line of groups that we will approve, that as these monies have become available, then they get in line to use it for another capital project. We, we got Town Theatre coming in, we've got Trustus Theater that, that's looking for funds. I'm sure there are others out there, other, the Historic Columbia's looking for, for some funds for repair of some of the cottages that we own. All of that could come out of that $500,000 we just.
Actually, that money could come from liquor rebate, because it's historic. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to go to hospitality.
I think some of our challenges on that has been that it actually has to also be capital, and their contract covers that they repay for care.
Well, that, that, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. The liquor rebate dollars, it comes and goes.
Mm-hmm. It's a small pot.
It's a small pot.
They're not breaking it up down in town.
That's because somebody wants to close them.
Here we go. Ding, 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 ding. All right. But that, that is something I, I think we ought to collectively always take a look at, because if we, I didn't know it was there for a while, and it had built up, and we were able to use some of that to do two things, to move that Montez school.
School.
To the other side of the street and help shore it up, and, you know, so.
And see him, eh?
Huh?
That, we, John got some.
Yeah.
And we owe him another.
Okay. That, that, I think, is a, a perfect example of how you can use those funds.
That's right.
From time to time. Of course, folks would have to get in line for that one.
That's right. We would plan that out multiple years, so that people would know that we're gonna have available in the next year $200,000.
Well, I mean, technically, you know, I, I get the two-year, but I don't think any group that's in that category has seen a significant decline in their funding over the last 10 years.
And then, too, now.
Not one of them.
But then, they, they don't know that it's gonna be there until July 1st.
You know, I, I guess the other question is, is how many groups are you talking about that receive $50,000 or more?
Well, if, if we can get an agreement that this is something that we wanna consider, then I think Jim, dear, and I, and the Arts Committee can work on coming up with that list. I didn't wanna show y'all a list today of proposals because.
How many, well, how many, how many people are we talking about?
How many groups?
Yeah.
Uh, probably 20 or 30.
In the 50,000 range?
Yeah.
Here comes the legal deal.
Legal will say it's not necessary.
It may have a few more than that.
It's not a legal decision, this is a finance decision. How many?
We had, may have a few more than that. I'm trying to run through and count now.
And that, that number I put in there was $50,000. That's, that's.
Just trying to get in that.
We ain't bringing it in.
Say what now?
It would be 20 or 30.
Yeah.
So, so, and, and, and that is out of how many groups that receive hospitality money?
Between 80 and 90.
So 30%. Okay.
30% of 50,000 dollars.
And I would have them still go to the committee to make sure that they've still got eligible projects, and they're still doing things that are acceptable under the state law.
So, just to understand the, the theory behind it, if you use Marjorie's thing, then so if you're currently giving somebody $300,000 for a certain project, you're talking about only giving them 150,000?
Well, that's not part of my proposal, no.
I thought that's what you just said.
I, I said, that's what she says. I haven't gotten on that for you, so that, that would be a big step. She says, she says that the norm for these type funds is to not fund more than half of the cost of the event, whatever you sponsor.
Or service.
Because it's like they're matching our contribution, the hospitality tax contribution. But I haven't gotten on there, because that's gonna be a major change.
He's talking about Marjorie's recommendations, Steve.
When, when she and I have had several conversations, and that's, that's part of our conversation, but it's not my, part of my proposal I'm putting on the table, because I think that's a big step, and that's gonna.
Where, where is the?
I'm having a hard time getting the contracts approved.
The, the goods and services that comply with age tax guidelines?
Usually, it's for, for most of the groups, it's for advertising and marketing, the age tax. Everything listed, security, a portion of the salary, if it's for the media and advertising, things like that. There's only the small percentage that fell into, and it's for things like clean and safe, where you have to decide how does that fall into the state guidelines of fitting, bringing the tourists in.
And clean and safe, so the, that, that means the labor and the service. Does that mean all the ancillary costs around it too?
We would need, we would need to be more specific on those. It's how we determine, or how council has determined them in the past, or staff has determined, determined them in the past to fit that. So it's how you determine it for the operations for clean and safe that are bringing the tourists in, are things you were talking about, the flower beds, things like that, is that included as operations or is it not? We need to have more clear guidelines on what would be acceptable and not acceptable.
And my point is, we don't need to get into those weeds, literally, in the flower beds.
But, but, but Howard, 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 let's, let's be honest. So penny sales tax, great example. The public, this is public money, this isn't some private in the money, this is public money, bought drinks and stuff for their administration. That's not an acceptable reimbursement, but it was being paid, now the county's having to pay it back. We've got organizations that are charging us for their employees' snacks and stuff. That is not an eligible expense. Gift cards are not an eligible expense. You remember the last time we had a gift card guy, we had to get rid of him because he was cashing them in and using them himself? That's my concern, is, is having a clear, it's, it's, and to say it's a burden, you're getting funding, you are getting funding, and the mission has changed. We've allowed it to change. It's council's needs to get back and reestablish how the funding's used. I don't think a, a change in the way we do it's a problem. I think we need to be very specific about it, though. And that's my concern, is, is that I'm sitting here going, I started to audit to look into it and understanding where people are spending their money, you know, the organization's missions have changed, you know? I didn't vote for the extra 50,000 for clean and safety, because City Center Partnership doesn't need it. You know, but when they started the bid, the bid was to, to, to do this block by block. Now, it's only shifted all to hospitality money, and now, we're gonna have, and, and all of this is gonna change as Harvest inputs in their request, because that's what they want. So we're gonna have everything clean and safe, which does have a role in tourism, there's no doubt about that. I, I agree with that, but at the same time, what are we gonna be left with? But at the same time, what are we gonna be left with? If every group has clean and safety funded out of here and a service, we're not having any money to grow the arts program. And that's part of the, the tourism. You know, we're getting away from marketing and using money clearly a lot more for services, which, you know, some of it, I don't, I don't know what happened to the sense of pride, but everybody expects everybody else to clean up after them today, and, you know, I do think that's an issue.
You got an eight-minute quarterback here, they're either shrieking or eight-minute, uh, uh.
Well, I mean, I just, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, you know, I, I just did a self-audit and I was just very shocked at what we've reimbursed. And it, and it, and, and it worries me on the long term of the hospitality and that if we're gonna make a change, which I think is, is probably warranted where we are, I, I agree with that. I just think we need to be more specific, but I don't believe that it should be left wide open without, you know.
Well, a couple of core thoughts, um, one is I think that every few years you gotta go back and look at the way you're doing things and, and reevaluate them. I think that's just smart, things change, priorities change, uh, practices shift, and you gotta come back and kinda gotta re-arrest the process and, and, uh, and make sure that things are, are going consistent, whatever the policy of the city is consistent with state and, and laws and our, our local ordinances. Secondly, um, I've, I've always been very clear about my belief that the funding priorities, uh, and the responsibility, uh, attached to them are that of this council. Um, we're, we're blessed to have a great group of citizens who do a whole lot of blocking and tackling for us, otherwise I'm not sure we'd be able to do anything else, to be honest with you. I think we could spend an entire, um, year, uh, going through age tax applications, we don't have to do that because we have some good, great folks. And we, we tend to tinker around the edges, um, here, there, and make some adjustments. But the, but the vast majority of work is being done by a group of, of citizen servants, and, and I think that's a great, a great thing, we need to keep that happening. With full recognition of the fact that the, uh, not only the authority, but responsibility to make those decisions rests with this council, with, with no one else. Um, I like the idea of streamlining to some degree, uh, as long as it's consistent with, with, with a, established set of, 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 with some clarity and some, and some accountability and, and, and some auditing. Um, I, I do love the idea of making sure that new and, and fledgling groups, uh, are from different parts who say you have an opportunity to participate in, in this process. I think that's gotta be built in here, uh, in, in some way, and I'm excited about participating to amplify the, the incredible experience that Marjorie recent, uh, is, is bringing uh, to our region, uh, through One, One Columbia. So, um, I, I mean, I'd love to, uh, digest this a little bit more.
Sure.
Um, Howard, uh, but, but, but you're right, we, we've gotta continue to police the process in a way in which we're, we're making sure that we're, we're following the same rules, that we're extracting, um, value, and that we, we're taking a, a close look at everybody's nine ninety and, and seeing exactly how, how strong they are, how strong the balance sheets are. And if we have to reallocate resources accordingly, we can, we can do so.
All right. So, no, no, no specifics on this today, other than we're gonna come back and, and further discuss it.
I think we ought to develop some guidelines to go with it, I think we need to know, you know, I do think the fifty years, fifty thousand, I mean, that, you're talking about twenty-five to thirty groups.
Getting that money, or that, or less, oh, forgetting, in that range, fifty thousand is a magic.
Well, I wanna go up or down.
Good.
I'd rather go up.
The original proposal actually came from Andy Smith, and he said which, it should be a hundred thousand, but I brought it down to be able to get smaller groups in.
That's the only way we can spread it around.
That's right, so that's why I brought it down to fifty.
Yeah, okay, I, I think we, we, we should do that.
The number is flow, fluid there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, um, you know, I met with, uh, let me.
Go ahead.
Let me say this before we shut this down, um, as part of the, uh, the forums we've been having with, with, uh, One Columbia and the artists around the city.
Right.
I've sat in on about three of those groups. And the, the one thing that has been constant in the conversations with the artists, I'm not talking about organizations, artists, individual artists, is that, um, they don't seem to feel that they can ever get a seat at the table.
Hell, they need to start paying their business license first, then they get a seat at the table.
I understand that, fine, I'm just saying, there's a, there, there are some people out there who.
I feel like that's Mr. Rickman's, uh.
Yeah. They, 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 they share the same feelings I have, and the question is, how do they get, remember, artists are the poorest folks in the professional field.
They've gotta find a hook that will let the age tax committee say that it will bring in tourists.
Right, but I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm hoping that as we go through all of this, we figure out a way, uh, that, uh, an individual artist who may be participating in some of these festivals or whatever, can, can, uh, get some assistance to help them.
That ought to come through the festival itself.
The ability, the ability.
Maybe, maybe not.
No, Sam, I think you're, I think, I think, I think, I think you're, uh, exactly right, the ability to do, uh, tightly structured micro grants that, that don't come with a, a whole lot of, uh, uh, administrative processes, but, but with some significant accountability, I think is a, is a, is a pretty good idea, uh, obviously has to be tied into what, what, what the resource is supposed to be going to, but, but you'd be amazed if I had a dollar, a thousand dollar.
Needs to be five hundred or less.
Yeah, but, but that, but it, it could be, it could be significant to some of these upset, upset artists, uh, I do think.
I got my, I got my start in, in, uh, artist blacksmithing, with a two thousand four hundred dollar grant from the Arts Commission. Uh, fifty, twenty, twenty years, that's how I got my start.
The best way to make it, make one of those micro grants work is that you make it a pool and they pay back in it over a period of time. And if you look at, you know, when, when I was in Egypt, that was one of the, the greatest things to see is this USA grants that we did all these micro grants for females to be able to start their own business.
Right.
Small amounts, and they paid it back, but they had the ability to go back so they could expand their business, and the impact it had was great.
And we, that makes sense in, uh, specific areas that are targeted for redevelopment also, the small, the, the small businesses, mom and, not really mom and pops in the old sense. Kids could use also, when you've got big development coming, but what about some of the smaller businesses that are gonna kinda, you know, pop up in, on some of these corridors or side streets?
Does it make sense for it, this to go to the committee to come up with a set of guidelines? To bring back the council? Because I think we, 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 we're, if we're at a moment of change, then we need to be looking at, you know, status of the organizations that are receiving money, you know, financially how stable they are, because, you, you remember, when this all came about, it was supposed to be, at a certain point, people came off of the hospitality because we built them up and, and their stature was grown. We seem to just continue to keep funding them more, you know, and, and I think, you know, every year we hear from certain groups, well, we're gonna shut our doors if y'all don't fund us. Well, maybe their time has come and gone, if that's the case, but I know two events that have happened this year that swore to us if they didn't get additional funding, and they probably had their best year they've ever had. So, you know, at a certain point, you know, how, how do we continue to spread, and, you know, may, maybe this is, is, there's maybe a little weaning in it? I don't know, but I do think that we need to start taking more accountability, because when organizations started, when you get to a certain level where, you know, you're financially sound, then maybe we ought to be weeding back. And what was your original intent too, have you changed your mission from when we first funded you? I mean, I think this is a perfect time to, to put that, but I think just blanketing, writing a check to somebody without some guidelines, I just, I, I think we're, we're creating a, a mess.
We, we're gonna definitely need feedback from the, uh, committee as to how we do this, and I think it all come, particularly Howard, this group one. Not only, um, someone agreeing to allow this to perform, to perform an audit, I think we need to get ahead and plan for and budget for some random audits as well, a handful of them. As a regular, regular duty of ours.
Um, currently, the committee, you were talking about the sustainability, that is one of the questions in the application, so that is one of the things that they consider. So, they do consider many of the things you're talking about already, when they go through and consider these groups. Um, keeping in mind to be diverse and get the money in the neighborhoods and things like that as well. But, and the guidelines themselves, like I said, most of them are security, advertising, marketing, the things that we, that are definitely eligible. And those are, um, audited internally as far as just, you know, through what we process, making sure that those are eligible, and then accounting does that as well. But there are those few that, um, when it comes under operations where we need some definite.
We need some more guidelines, so maybe, would it make sense to have some folks from the hospitality committee, the age tax committee, and, and the arts, the council committee come together and try to put something together? I mean, I, I, I think that would make a lot of sense.
Who's on the arts committee for the council, is that? Do you know the council members that are on that?
Is Mr. Mc, is it McDowell? No, um, Art Store Preservation, I see.
The city's council arts.
It was, it was chaired by Ms. Vidura, um, I'm not sure who stood in for Mr. Vidura.
Y'all been meeting a lot lately. Well, I would suggest that, you know, Howard's brought a proposal that he sit in on the committee, so that you've got three members representing council.
And we'd get a group out of the arts.
I'd grab a couple of those folks.
I would, I would suggest we do that sooner than later.
Okay.
And use, use your proposal as the basis and then get into the DDA.
Okay, uh, John, this is part John's proposal too, that he's, he sent this proposal to the mayor several years back.
Mayor trashed it, I think.
All right, we'll put that together, let's work at it again.
Pray for you.
Just for logistical purposes, is part of the changes expected to be made for this upcoming funding cycle starting July one? Because I think the committee, the committee meets to review applications.
Well, I mean, I, I think that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't change what the committee does. What it's gonna do is when it comes to, it's gonna tighten up what the expenses are and, and the guidelines around it. I mean, that shouldn't change requests or, or anything else, I don't think, it just may be what they don't get reimbursed.
And then, I guess the other part too is, I'm not clear on whether or not some of these, if, if it works out that there's additional allocations made for these certain categories, is that the committee that is making those fundings for those categories, because obviously city councils can establish directions.
Continue to do their work, and let this be advisory for, let's prepare for the next, next budget cycle, I mean, I think, let them operate.
If we can, if we can find something that, uh, is, got the right guidelines from Mr. Rickman, if we could get it in starting in July.
Look, y'all can vote around me, I'm just telling you that, that I think there needs to be specific guidelines, and I think unfortunately by just spending a little time going through the reimburseables, it really opened my eyes that we, we are, we have not, you know, did.
Well, let that, let that be, let that be an advisory and a reimbursement, I mean, first, let's, let's, I think, I think you can bifurcate this discussion. If we're gonna change the, the overall process, let that be perspective, let the process go through as is, I, I just think we got more than enough to say grace over and not enough time. That's just, that's just my, that's my, that's my opinion.
Or, or maybe, maybe we could, we could tweak, uh, uh, because I, I brought us to, uh, kinda really come to some kind of agreement on that one question. The question of whether or not, uh, the dollars can be spent on administrative costs such as participating in the executive director's salary. Now, I, it's happening out there, but there's a understood rule that, that can't be done.
It can be done.
Well, I, I.
If, if our rules prevented it, can't be done, but I think it can be done.
Okay, I, for example, uh, um.
I think it can be done, but if, if people have the assets from other resources, then they shouldn't be using our money for that.
I understand that, I'm, I'm talking about it here again, an organization is trying to get to where they should be.
Yeah.
After so many years.
Well, if you, if you go with reimbursement.
They've always been denied, I think, the salary for the executive director, that's NCBA.
Hmm, I, I don't, I don't think, I think they've been able to do that as a proportional, you can't do a hundred percent of it.
No, no, I'm not.
Proportionally for the work you do, so if you run all the advertising, then you can bill for a portion of that.
That's something I'm gonna encourage them to do this year because they have, you know, uh, they're, um, they're last in line when it comes to that. It is a legitimate expense, but it's just been some confusion as to whether or not it's allowable.
If we continue on reimbursable, then you automatically are eliminating some of the smaller groups that don't have the wherewithal to front the money.
Right. I understand, okay, so.
Yeah, but we're, but I, I don't know if I agree with that statement, Howard, because if you're, if you're planning for an event, unless it's happening before your, your money, I mean, you can, you can float that money, I mean, we're, we've been, I don't think, any event that has not been held because of us on money.
Not giving them money.
Is that, can anybody name one?
Well, you might have ones that could have done an event, but they don't have the resources to get the event done to ask the city for reimbursement.
Well, then, then maybe they shouldn't be doing the event, right?
Well, the coast to Sam's thing is the new, new innovative groups that might be out there that could help us.
But at the same time, just if you just take what Marjorie's talking about, you wouldn't, you wouldn't fall in that category. And Prudet says you don't build an event if you don't have any money to get the event going. I mean, that, I mean, that's.
So, that would be an organization that's, uh, basically living solely on what we give them.
Right.
On the front end.
And if they're living solely on what we're giving, that's, that wasn't the intent of hospitality either, never was, never has been.
So, who's calling them in?
So, the committee is, is actually, uh, Mr. Vidura, Mr. Duval, and Mr. McDowell. So, in Mr. Vidura's absence, you mind, servant?
I'll sit in.
Okay.
Sit in.
McDowell, Davis, and Duval.
Yeah, so same committee, just, just different, different, we got there a different way.
Who's calling?
Erica.
Erica?
Okay, do we need to take a, uh, health break before we delve into the next topic?
The next topic.
General fund. General fund.
Oh, yeah.
So, you can't do that, so, you can agree on it, but you can't contract for services that you can't already contract with the city's law.
I can't get over, we don't want the people to prove how.
In this, in this proposal, you can't do it as a contract by service.
What?
These things he wants to do.
I mean, I'm telling you.
You can't, unless, unless it's something that, unless they're providing the service or the city does, us giving them funds to help them do something.
But what I think we should do is do the proper thing is.
Some places may provide us with services, but all of them not.
I think part of it's out.
So, so we can't do the whole contract thing anymore.
That's just natural migration, because you probably decide, you gotta go back and get a little, a little, correct, you know. Five years later, we gotta, you gotta come back again.
It's gonna, it's gonna be an evolving process. I'm very concerned.
I believe you, I, I, I do, I do, because you gotta balance sheet. We oughta be able to spread these resources a lot more, failure.
I, I need to write it down, so I can rely on.
At some point, you gotta say, you know, so you've been on the cities in the heart of, so, you know, I struggle a little bit right now when I look at it.
So, what's the question, service or payment?
It was created to pay for.
The collective taxes, the paper, paper, paper.
But now we're using hospitality money here.
But we should have never done it.
They got like close to eight.
I never said that, but that's what the council said, I mean, we should have never done it.
Yeah.
That's because one, one person did.
We can grow you, but we should. That's why that fifty thousand, we just.
So, you said.
But I just pulled random things to look at, so I took like the first reimbursement quarter and just went through it. But I just pulled random things to look at. So I took like the first reimbursement quarter and just went through it. So, so have we created this?
Expectation.
Yeah. And how, how do we grow some of these groups at the same time?
What do we do without the resources?
Sid, are you, are you speaking on the smart cities side?
Well, I, I had lunch yesterday in New York with, uh, folks from Carlisle. Jennifer Gold was talking about you. Jennifer Gold, she works, she runs partners in Carlisle.
At Carlisle, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I was asking for ten million dollars for the museum, the, the Melbaughner Museum.
Good morning.
They, they, she gonna help us get it. We went up to meet all the hedge funds and spend two days. But she said something to me. She goes, well, you know, the mayor from Columbia. I said, well, you know, I served with the mayor. And she's like, well, you should come up to the smart cities. Yeah, well, the, the players that are.
A friend of mine organized, already tanned, and she's pulled together a really, really strong list.
It's interesting, because all those people are fascinated with our state.
Every two, three weeks.
It's amazing to me.
We're just, we're much more common citizens staying with, with good, strong business fundamentals. Like capital, private, private sector capital, that's maybe. We can just progressive slash conservative enough, you know what I mean? You know, that you can get some things done. Connecticut, you know, Connecticut people all in the front for the border, and New Yorkers, New York. Uh, it's a, you can, you can buy a great home, kind of great home.
Well, that's what they were talking about. So we, we, the Melbaughner Museum, we just hired Joe Daniels, who was the president of nine eleven. Museum, Mayor Bloomberg appoint, he was working there and it made him the president, whatever. He's coming, he's moving to Charleston, gonna take, take it on. He's a young guy, but you'd like him a lot, but.
Our state is buzzing big time.
I mean, he said the same thing. All those people, so we were up there Sunday and Monday and everybody I was talking to. Just obsessed with South Carolina. It is crazy. I mean, they really are.
Brooklyn's board a few weeks ago. We speak to another group, California, that's why, that's why I'll be next week. And historically, we, we, we've elbowed into the conversation, guys. I mean, Columbia has the midlands. You know, Greenville-Chris, Greenville-Chris. But now, we're, we're in the, and I think that's, that's, that's the reason I'm doing this New York thing. But yeah, think about May, May eighth, I'll have Chalansy go in.
Well, they're, 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 you know, so like, I didn't realize Carlisle had an office in Charlotte. We're close enough to Charlotte, we don't have these folks come in here and put some offices. Because when I explained to her the distance between Charlotte and Columbia and the mountains and the shores, she was like. Yeah.
Apparently, my pitchcock, State District, I was being with him last week. They had, they had Riverside here, like, a few months ago. He was found as here in Columbia.
Yeah.
He was up over at the, yeah, at the eighteen.
HPC, Sola, Apollo, Al Rock, you know, Al Rock's principal has a house at Sullivan's. And his wife graduated from South Carolina at the time we did. And now he's become this big Gamecock fan and this and that, which is, it's interesting.
I can probably deliver.
But do we know when Tamika was getting back?
And I've got about, I probably only got two minutes myself.
Thought you were the one calling. Is it really? Oh, yeah.
I got a twelve thirty map.
Ready when you are, Missy.
Okay.
As you sit there and, and, and gaze at us.
Yes, I was, I was.
I know you're being very patient.
We'll make sure we. Okay, so our last item for today is discussion of the general fund. We have not yet brought you the general fund other than revenues. Revenues have not, we have not made really any changes to our revenue projections since we last brought them to you. Of course, we still have business license tax coming in to evaluate as one of the items. But otherwise, revenues right now are still, still at the same level we had produced to you earlier, which is a hundred and forty-four million. The budget that's proposed right now, or that's, this is actually reflective of what's been requested. That means this is not the city manager's proposed budget, and of course, the budget is in imbalance. But this is what the budget is, is the full request at this point. We didn't show you this graph last time with regards to revenues, but do wanna, did wanna just demonstrate to you, these are the primary sources of revenue for the general fund. You can see our, our property taxes, you know, we're, we're seeing some growth there, both in collections and then, of course, what we budgeted over some recent years. Probably not the kind of growth we would anticipate or like to see, but we'll, we'll evaluate that, of course, further before we bring you back another iteration of the budget. Business licenses and permits, we've seen some, you know, some, some steps there as well in terms of growth. Also, our, from other agencies, which represents, a big chunk of that is gonna be state shared revenues, which as we all know is not funded at the full, um, formula, but at least at this point has steadied off. Where, where we're seeing probably the meakest area is gonna be our fines and forfeitures, which is, actually, I skipped over current service charges. Those reflect pretty flat. That's an area where we think that we have some opportunities in, in the sense of services. Are, are, those are the, those are basically user fees, and there's obviously a number of funds and a number of activities in the general fund that are user-based, but of course, those are, are set, are, 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 are pretty minimal in terms of comparison to the entire, whole budget. Like I said, lastly, the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Saying there are areas that we have not taken advantage of?
Some, they're small, but the, the revenues that they generate are small as well. For instance, park, parks and recreation fees. Some solid waste fees, some small, you know, some, some, some of those type of things, you know, our user fee type of activities. We can give you more description as we need to, but there are some opportunities there, they're just not gonna be big generators. Now, cost recovery and getting this more cost recovery is, is some areas that we may wanna talk about at some point too. Then, like I said, fine, fines and forfeitures, we're seeing a steady sort of, it, it's flat to almost minimal and actually reductions in those fines and forfeitures.
What's the reason behind that?
Well, I'm.
Be frank, please.
I imagine there's a number of different reasons. I couldn't tell you specifically, some of it, some of which is the ability to pay perhaps. Some of it is the ability that you're, of the actual fines being administered to, to the cases in terms of charging, you know, the, for the offense.
Are we able to track exactly whether or not we're actually assessing fines at all?
We can find that out for you.
I think, well, no, it's, it's one thing though if it's collections issues, it's another thing though if it's, if we're not, if judges aren't assessing them.
I think, if I remember.
When appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the struggles we've always had is, you remember, we, we looked at third-party collection and so forth, and we've never been able to, to get that. I mean, I think there's what, two and a half million dollars worth of outstanding fines out there. And then, you know, I know Elle's not here, but she's been working. That's just a number I was told.
That would be parking.
Core fees and stuff.
And Elle would be for parking.
Yeah, well, and the reason I brought up parking is, is just an example, is I had an outstanding ticket. They had my driver's li, I mean, my license plate, but no, I never got a letter, never got anything, because they didn't have our address. We are not integrated to track people down.
So when we set up a collection agency years ago, we did, we were told that we couldn't do parking tickets at that time because they were a citation, so we were not allowed to use the collection agency for that. We have talked with legal about it. I think we're still waiting on an opinion, because we just set out an RFP for a new collection agency. We do set off debt for water sewer bills, but, you know, some things for code enforcement, but that's about it.
You can do it for fines and forfeitures also?
We have never used municipal, used it for municipal court. That's why I was surprised. Now, if you're talking about citations, that's one thing, but if you're talking about the fines for municipal court, that.
Fines and, and, and the, because we had looked at a service several years ago and Judge Toll wouldn't allow it, even though she got the bulk of it, which made no sense to me whatsoever. I think we need to revisit that because, you know, that, that was, you know, that paid for all the, you know, monitoring, all that stuff that we did, we, you know, we, we, there's a lot of money sitting there.
I'll check, I'll send a thing over.
You should.
Our court costs aren't going down and definitely our jail costs aren't going down.
Any recent memo, Dana sent something to us about position and the chief justice's position.
Yes.
Fines and fees. Have to go back and review it.
Requirements of delaying a trial because the lawyer, the defendant requests the lawyer and you have to reschedule it, and then you gotta give them another couple of chances, but it also mentioned in that set off debt. And according to the municipal association, it was not a big change in the set off debt, I, because I saw that in Dana's memo.
Yeah, I don't know that she, we use it for water and sewer, but I don't know that it's being used for anything else.
Well, you can. We also need to realize that, that a lot of this might be going back to our people that we put on our municipal court. If, if we put people on the municipal court that are all prosecutors or former prosecutors, they're not gonna be as heavy on some of our cases as if we had people that were not biased towards the defendant. That, that figure that we have is very low compared to other cities that I'm aware of.
Yeah, that's why.
And I think it goes back to our judicial party over there.
Was that a long way? I said we have a bunch of defense attorneys and not, not prosecutors.
Well, I was doing, I was saying that diplomatically, but I think it's biased towards the, against the police and for the defendant.
I'm married to a former prosecutor who was a fantastic municipal judge for many years.
Yeah, but I'd still too.
Let's get the, let's.
Inevitability court.
It'd be, it'd be worthwhile seeing what's been assessed previously, and then also, at least, let's take a look at Charleston, North Charleston, just to get an idea.
We're doing some of that too.
What the numbers look like comparatively.
The projection right now is eight.
One other thing on that, I, I know that there's some municipal municipalities that when a judge has gotten his four-year, I think the law says either a two-year or four-year commitment. But if, let's say it's a four-year commitment, that you, instead of reappointing them, you let them serve in pleasure of counsel, because they serve until their successor is qualified. And then you have a little bit more ability to talk to those judges about, we need to be unbiased in our opinions and stuff like that. That's the same thing the senators do with magistrates. There's a whole bunch of magistrates that are not reappointed, but they continue to serve, and then there's under the thumb of the senator.
That's interesting.
I understand that.
Processes. All right.
We'll look up, look at more information for you on that. Okay, so the general fund requested budget at this point is mentioned is not in balance. Departments are always instructed to prepare their budgets maintaining current service levels and trying to maintain what we currently do, not necessarily always adding to or decreasing depending upon their current service levels. Of course, there are some times where there are, are reasons where there are some increases in service levels. But of course, also too, trying to meet the, the goals of the envisioned Columbia plan. The total requested budget at this point is a hundred and fifty-nine million, which is a seventeen million dollar or twelve percent increase over the current year budget.
And this, this reflects no changes in healthcare, correct?
It does reflect changes in healthcare. Departments had a two thousand dollars over two. That seventeen million over two million of it is increases in healthcare.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is, is this doesn't, so whatever changes we make will have a direct effect on that.
This is based on assuming.
Everything's status quo.
Claims at, at the current kind of level as well as our cost being at the current level.
Yes, if, if we make changes based upon earlier discussions today and other things, that can have an effect on this budget.
Oh, it have a big effect.
Well, if the forecast this morning for the OPEB part was nineteen million, it could do with option one.
Yeah, and that's not all general fund. That'll be amongst all the funds. But general fund is over half, right?
So you're talking about ten million dollars maybe?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
So y'all are telling us you want option one. So seventeen million, uh, that increase, you said?
Seventeen million increase. That's just what's requested. Of course, by the time we balance the budget, it's gonna look a lot different. Also, part of that equation is increase in state retirement, which is about a million and a half of this increase. That's increased in here as well. So departments request, just departments, request is a hundred and thirty-five million. That's twelve million dollar increase over the current year budget or ten percent. As mentioned, all departments, everybody with an employee reflects an increase both in healthcare and state retirement. The non-departmental, the other portion of the budget is six point four million, one point one million of that increase or twenty-two percent. And the maj, thus pretty much all related to our capital lease program. We, our goal is to, is to fund eight million dollars every year on a capital lease, which is not a lease per se, it's a capital lease purchase program. And in current fiscal year, we only were able to do four million, which means we're behind in some of the capital we need to replace. So we're trying to maintain that, getting it back at least to the eight million that's needed every year. And of course, that adds to, there's equal revenue of eight million and equal expense of eight million, but the debt service is where there's gonna be the reflecting, what's making up this increase. So then transfers out, I'm sorry. So transfers out totals three point three million, I mean, seventeen point eight million, which is a three point three million increase or twenty-three percent. And again, that's the increase on capital replacement going from four million to eight million. There's also an offsetting revenue for that. So if we don't fund all eight million in the capital replacement, the equal revenue will also come down off of that. The bottom portion just sort of shows you how our costs are broken out by major categories, with personnel service being at a hundred million of the hundred and fifty-nine million. Of course, the general fund is the largest employer of our funds in terms of the number of positions. And of course, we are a service industry, so the majority of the cost is and will always be personnel cost with regards to the general fund. And that makes up both salaries and fringes and benefits. Operating expenses are at eight point nine. Those are consumable items. Gasoline, office products, materials, um, um, non-capital tools or, or equipment.
Coca-Cola's for the stand.
Yeah, probably.
And council.
One and a half minutes. Was that, is that, is that? Um, what's.
Well, it's probably our power bill.
That's the next category. The next category is service.
Building in City of Columbia that's set at seventy-five degrees year round.
The next category is service expenses, and that's like ten point five.
My house would never be this warm.
Electricity.
Get us ready.
Contracts for services.
I, I, I read where you mentioned, you know, the, I, I think it's a, a request of like twenty-three new personnel positions. I, I, I read where you mentioned, you know, the, I, I think it's a request of like 23 new personnel positions. Have we evaluated our current personnel to justify the needs and what those services are for?
And here, is there a breakdown in the 23, with, with departments and?
I didn't break it down in the memo, but this fell down in the memo. 20 of those positions, 23 of those positions are 911.
Yeah, you did say that.
That's a fairly, that's, that's-
20 of those positions are 911?
10 call takers and 10 telecommunications. No, actually, that's totaled between city and county, so we actually split that, so it's not total. So 10 would be the city and we only fund half of the-
How many people do we have now?
78 or 80?
Where are we with that?
And that budget is split 50/50 with the city and the county.
That's because it's 24/7.
Not all of them are call takers and telecommunications. Some of them also are the administrative staff. It also forces-
We're working on some efficiency, effectiveness measures in 911 already. I mean, trying to improve, improve our service there and also looking in this, this, this cooperative, the new cooperative agreement with, with, with the county. If, if we're doing that, then how do we justify paying for 20 more positions there as well?
Well, this isn't the final, so that may be one of the items that we'll have the discussion taking off. I had just received correspondence from like a county interim administrator this morning. They're asking for us to just renew the 911 contract for another year as we continue the discussion with the collaboration, bring everything together.
And that would, that would put a halt to adding 20 new positions?
It can.
If, if, if we're talking about running a more efficient operations, more responsive, how do we justify paying for 20 new positions before we've done that?
No, we, we agree. We're going through all the various items right now. Just, this is what makes up this amount. By the time we come back to y'all in May.
Well, just now, we're looking.
Sure, no, I see. The questions you're asking are the good input that we need to put all this together.
I, I should say, they asked, they've asked for these, these positions for a couple of years because they, the last increase in positions they received was 2012, I believe. And of course, you know, their, their call volume grow, has, has also gone up. So they're processing a million calls, dispatching 500. And then they get another big chunk of their work is F O Y request on a daily basis.
So on their side, our side?
But across the board, that's the entire operation.
So as long as we need to be equally invested in, so whatever, you know, both parties do for the health, you know, but I think you also, i- if we do make this joint and it changes, we need to understand what the effect that has on these people that are being hired as well because, I mean, it could be devastating, number one to them. And then the second part is, is last October, we asked for all the information on the jail because we constantly are, I mean, the number is quite large now for our portion. And we have yet to ever receive the first financial.
Another bill?
Document, yeah.
He's got a bigger bill, that's why they-
Yeah, that's what they do. They send it to us. And if we did the same thing to the county, they would raid us. I mean, it's $600,000 now.
And actually, their, their, their amount has increased every year, but the number of inmates-
Rapidly.
But the number of inmates has, the number of inmates and the number of days actually in has not increased. So that's the only reason why we're able to even sustain at 600.
Well, the struggle I have and I've always had with it is, is true, we pay for the jail in our property tax. The city residents paid for the jail to be built through the bonding when it's done. And we get, we pay extra. And, and to me, that's not acceptable. And, and if we can't get an accounting, we're not paying it. They have to take our prisoners because it's an agreement and that agreement is when we built it. And so Jeff, as you speak to intern, we need to get those numbers and we need to understand these costs. And we want to know what everybody else is paying. And if there is increased costs, is the county paying its equal share of those increased costs? Because I don't think we're, how many prisons, Chief, you think we are percentage wise?
Well, we have the highest call volume.
Right.
But I, like Missy said, our arrests, we had over 6,000 arrests last year. I haven't actually looked at our monthly average at the jail. But it's, it's been, it's remained pretty flat over the last few years. I, I, you could probably tell the number actually very well, but-
Yeah, so we, we get it, we get an, we, our invoice is detailed in the sense of inmates that are coming in and the ones that are being charged to. I mean, it's pretty detailed. It doesn't tell us about the entire operations of the jail. All, all that is an invoice on-
Well, that's what they're justifying the cost increase. But I mean, if you look at what we paid 10 years ago and what we're paying today.
Well, the rate, the rate started at 25 and it's going up to 45. And then after that, it will increase on a percentage of operate, percentage of cost, just average cost.
Well, I agree with Daniel. Let's get the, let's get that information.
We'll get that.
What's the, the capital request? Let's talk about that a little bit. 1.7 million, what does that look like? What are we talking about?
So some of the, a large portion of that, most of our capital is replacement capital bought through our capital lease replacement program. Typically, these would reflect capital, not part of that replacement, other because they are new items adding to the inventory or they are above and beyond what needs to be sort of, is on the replacement schedule. So a large chunk of this, 1.7, actually about 1.2 of it is for emergency operations, a mobile command unit and some other facilities there.
And, and can we get a briefing on that? I mean, that just seems to me that, I mean, is that something that we need to invest in today?
A million and one, new command unit estimated at 77.
And then some aerial. And ballards that would be actually installed ver- installed versus mobile. I think that's still to be determined. Portable, I should say.
And that's used, that's used in all emergency situations, not just inclement, not just storms, but whatever.
Crowd controls. Obviously, the biggest chunk, the over 750,000 of that is a mobile command unit.
I mean, an increase of 1.2 million for, for, I mean, that's-
It's purchased, that's one time, that's one of the one-time purchases?
That's one of the one-time purchases.
That's one-time purchase?
And of course, there are, you know, there's other ways to sort of look at funding for those type of items. Right now, this is just a cash.
And that can't be funded through C D B G D R, I mean, prospectively? If that's what, I mean?
Not the current action plan, but it's something we can consider as part, we can look through for the action plan. We also, there's a number of grant mechanisms there ha- well, that have been in place. Some of those have dried up, but we can certainly explore other grant opportunities and look at the D R, especially since this latest allocation that's yet to be coming is intended for mitigation type of purposes. So how it sort of fits into there.
It's going to be incredibly helpful than it was helpful last time.
With, with, with guys who brought one in.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Certainly, these would be more of those crowd, crowd control activities versus the inclement weather in terms of mobile, mobile activities and the aerial types of things. And again, you know, these are, we, we don't, usually the budget when we come, especially by the time we bring you the proposed budget, these requests have been scaled back significantly. Obviously, some of these requests are, are warrants, additional consideration and, and review. Of course, we have to balance that between existing and maintaining operations and, and programs.
I just, I'm sorry. Got a bunch of memos, I have Erica.
So. I mean, basically, everybody's got increases, which, I mean, I can see because we're, we're growing, but you know.
We got to cut, cut to this, just be frank, y'all, pretty deep. I mean, we're this far out of whack with these, this many new requests against the revenue we see coming in, we're just not going to be able to do it. And I know, obviously, you guys have showed us everything. We appreciate that. But hopefully, when you come back, you've taken a deeper look.
And that's how our process usually is, is, you know, obviously, we want to be able to share with you what we have. Of course, you know, a few things to point out. The bu- the budget at this point, the 15 million deficit is made up both of revenues and expenses. The revenue side, we're not yet reflecting a $3 million tran- use of fund balance. We have to look to make sure that 3 million is going to be available for the next year. Of course, we, our goal is to eventually wean ourselves from that. So that we're not budgeting at the deficit, but we're not at that point. The other item too, like we said, we've got a few other tweaks we need to make to revenues. On the expense side, there are, we do not yet reflect the credit that we'll get from the state for the state retirement system. At this point, it is still in the budget, so we can expect that. That'll be about 600 to 700,000 dollars benefit to the general fund. So that will help. Of course, Mr. Rickman, as you mentioned, all departments reflect an increase. On average, just the health and retirement increase is 6 to 7%.
Right.
That, so any of those that you see that are outside of that 6 to 7% or that are in that range, that's the only requested increase that they have is for the-
But when you look at, and I'll just, just, if you just pull out parks and wrecks, you know, we're going to get park rangers for Bull Street. Is that really necessary at this point?
It's not, what?
The park's not even complete.
It'll be open September. And it's not just Bull Street. It's, there's some other, of the Greenway use and some other ranges, but it's opening in September for that green space. So there'll be more than just that. But that's the, some of the principal.
And then looking at the component units, you know, at some point, you know, we continue to, to, to fund these, these groups. And I guess the question really comes down to is, you know, we probably ought to get briefed on what the return is in these units and what the activity is. And I noticed in two, in the O B O office is asking for a significant amount of money as well.
It comes with new leadership, you know that? It comes with new leadership.
Yeah, but no, I think, you know, what's interesting though is just trying to understand some of our, our programs, you know, what, you know, additional facade grant, you know, that, a lot of requests for that. And we've been trying to rotate that. The micro loan program, you know, but, you know, we're going to do another updated disparity study to assist developing the updated goals, you know, in the S M B E. And I guess my question, you know, there is, is we've done these mentoring programs, we're doing this, but yet we're not seeing the return or the growth of a lot of these businesses. And, and so how do, how do we, how do we leverage what we already existing have to make sure that we're getting there? You know, we've done this mentoring program at the, in the wastewater and everywhere, but we're not seeing people get over to that next level. I think we do a tremendous job of making sure that we're inclusion in everything. I mean, I do think we are by far great. But I guess, you know, you start looking at this is, is have we measured actually results of what we have first before we embark in a new quarter million dollar study?
And that's one of the items that we would consider one time and possibly breaking out if it were desired to go there. Breaking out maybe every two fiscal years if needed. But again, it's still coming up with the-
I mean, we just, we have a lot going on. And as we move forward and, you know, adding positions and new roles and stuff, we need to understand how that affects all the other team members in here because, you know, we got a lot of infrastructure to take care of as well.
The solicitor probably doesn't need that 215,000 next year. He's not going to be babbling this much.
Move that, I'm going to be stricken from the record.
No, she probably won't, but I, I, it looks like I've got some-
She's just giving us an overview.
Yeah.
Slide 15.
Slide 15.
It's probably page.
Seven.
You've got two. Um. Do you still have maintaining the million dollars in for hosp- for homeless services as well? I don't have that listed here. And then we, we have not yet reflected any funding for our general capital projects. Of course, that's what's used to update our parks, update city facilities, anything that's going to be general fund related. Our fire stations, least substations. We don't have those requests here for you, but there are, we do have, obviously, capital requests as well. Historically, council has often funded, we, we try to fund those in cash in the budget, but then also too, funding them from any fund balance if and when it's available. It's also used for our roads, trying to maintain a, a level of, often requested is 500,000 to be able to annually appropriate towards road resurfacing and rebuilds and then sidewalks. Be remiss if we didn't at least mention that in here.
Well, in addition to mentioning it though, can we make sure that we have what that list is before we start making any allocations to outside groups?
Absolutely. We're not reflecting anything at this point with regards to outside groups other than in terms of like community promotions. Only outside groups that are in here are those things that are like contracted for, like with the detention, the detention center and the solicitor and homeless services and things like that. Most of the, we haven't brought, but there's also no funding for those.
We need to tell the people that have been getting community promotion money not having any this year.
You didn't have any this year.
We told people that last year.
I know.
Yes. Is, um, let's see, is the, um, and I know it depends on whether or not it makes the cut. I understand that. But is my request for the wealth gap study in here?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm going to put that on the table.
The what?
Wealth gap study.
The wealth gaps. Oh, that was before you got here.
Everything was before I got here.
Um, I need, we need 50,000 to contract for a study on the wealth inequalities within the community so that we know that we're targeting the right programs. Several cities have done it and have done, understand.
What programs are you referring to?
Like C D B G and just all of our programs because, I mean, we kind of know, but we don't necessarily know, just, like what I shared with everybody last year, like Boston did a wealth inequality study and they found that the, the wealth gap was so big, you know, it would take generations to actually bring people on the same level. But it helps you target. So if you're like, for instance, the child savings account that we talked about yesterday. But, you know, if you're, it helps you figure out programs like that can help teach kids younger, then they'll be in a better footing to make better financial decisions. Or, you know, some of the programs that we're about to do with our employees, we know, you know, how that's helping them build wealth versus just paying their bills.
I'd support that. I mean, I'd, I'd support helping fund that. We could probably also find some philanthropic money that might help us. There's a whole lot of focus on equity and inclusion and getting good data to support the kind of decisions. We're talking, we're talking about making several million dollars worth of investments based on that data. So I think it's, I think it's smart. And it's, it's, it's in challenging times, y'all. We're watching an economy that's growing and, and booming in some, in some regards. But we're also watching the, the wealth gap grow and the benefits from that growth go more to capital than, than to labor. So you can work harder, as hard as you possibly can, but you can't keep up and catch up. And it's, it's, it's a major challenge. That data's helpful. We got a couple ideas, maybe some places we could also get at least a portion of that money. Maybe if, if we, we put some of the money, it might be, get someone to put some more money. Yeah, match it and say, and so.
But in, in that, in that instance, in your, in your comment, one of the challenges that we've had with labor in Columbia and in our own programs is, is too, is, is, is helping educate people that, you know, if you can't pass a drug test, you can't get hired. You know, that has been a challenge with every city program we put together and training. And a lot of the business community are saying the same thing. It's, it's not a lack of labor here, it's a lack of-
Particularly for the jobs in our supply. Yeah, mid, mid skilled jobs that pay, pay a good living, earn a good wage. Can't pass a P test.
But I think it'd be good for us to help i- i- if we're leaning into those programs to make sure that we, we, we tackle all aspects of it and it's part of that education program.
That really concludes the highlight or overview, other than talking about next steps and our next steps-
So when we get into line by line items and the fluorescent pens?
We gave them to you last year. We can give it to you.
The red ink. The red ink, fluorescent pens.
Yeah, y'all gonna, y'all gonna take a swipe at this or you want us to play with and continue some thought? Y'all gonna take a swipe at this, or you want us to play with and send you some thoughts, or you want, or both?
Well, I think we've heard some thoughts from you today. Of course, you know, the, when we bring you back a budget, we'll reflect those things that you all have expressed an interest in or want to see going forward.
Yeah, and some, and some things, y'all guys, take, take, just take a really serious swipe at these. We're not buying another vehicle for public relations immediately. We've got, we've got cars sitting in our garage over there on a regular basis. Let's figure out how we can pool them and use them a lot, a lot more easily. And this, let's, let's dig deep and figure out how we can make some things happen.
Of course, the healthcare is another component, and then we have some additional swipes at revenue.
Well, I think we're going to have to tackle that one very quickly.
Can y'all get the best you can done? I'd like to have a live.
Help me, help me understand how the council support services budget goes down, because it's a non-election year.
150,000, there was 150,000 in for the election.
Say what?
Well, maybe, we'll say that then, say that, say that then.
I thought it did, I'm sorry. I thought it did say non-election year.
It is what it says, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I want the services.
You occasionally, I occasionally see that.
Did I forget to apply for some grant money?
Yeah, I was wondering, too. Hilarity, hilarious.
I think our biggest thing at this point is just discussions of the schedules and bringing things back. What I'm hearing is an interest in starting earlier on the 15th?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, and then we could bring back.
I mean, if we can meet before then to kind of tackle, be great.
Maybe me, in terms of meeting, like, some of these specific projects or some of the specific, some of those.
Are you talking healthcare? I think we're going to talk to, missing everyone else, let's make sure the requests we have from the quiet zone committee as well, whatever work, I mean, obviously, there's some, there's some federal funding that we think might be available, too, but let's, let's take a look at that and make sure that the, at least factor in in the decision-making process. Also, some of the other requests, for example, the first facade program we did was funded by CDBG. 420 grand or so we did downtown.
There's actually 100,000 in the general, in their budget now. This 100,000 in that's mentioned here is to increase it to 200. There's already 100 in their budget.
Okay, the, with, with the.
The sum of it with CDBG, yeah.
With the significant and unanticipated increase that we got, we're going to get in CDBG and other funds because of the omnibus bill, is that someplace we can, we might be able to find those funds as opposed to funding for the general fund? And I'll put some other notes down, but if we were able to benefit from some of the federal resources and being used appropriately, let's give the general fund some, I know we're going to get a new red line version that's going to make us all very proud. When we missed a note, we missed, this is what happens with Mr. Noah, is no longer Mr. Noah for a few weeks. He's going to shift right back into, into Mr. Noah.
Red pen comes out. On that, there will be other things that will be following up as well on revenues. Y'all may have noticed, there's a lot of talk on the change, the electric fees, state house, that will have an effect on our franchise fee as well, so we're going to have to think about those going forward.
Say that again, now, what, what's?
They decrease.
The franchise fee, if the state forces electric fees to go down, our franchise fee will go down as well. So, that can have a significant effect as well.
We can raise taxes to get it back.
No, you can't.
Well, you can raise taxes within the constraints of Act 388, so that's just a few mills.
How many mills do we have left?
That's a good question, I'll have, I don't know if we've updated that, it's going to be right around four to five.
In terms of what we have in the bank.
Yeah. Yeah, I assume you mean the total bank of CPI.
We got a question.
Where are we with the light? What started off as a streetlight fund that we started calling the smart city fund?
Pay for new services, right?
I've got a.
Looking at that.
Figure out a way to collect it.
Yeah, we would like to, but we've had to have been focused on just trying to get current general fund and what we're doing.
So, the 15th, what we're going to do on the 15th?
By then, we will either have brought you a balanced budget or a budget that can be balanced with some options for city council to consider on how it's balanced. But it'll be significant.
What was that?
The question was, what are we doing on the 15th? So, when we come back on the 15th.
What time, I mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were about what we'd actually be bringing back to you.
I think, I think early the better. Yeah, does, does this also include, I know there's a revenue generating issue that Robert put on the table a few weeks.
We just talked about that.
I'm dating an hour where.
The biggest, yeah.
How much was, how much was that?
The streetlight fee. The question is whether it's to cover just new or if it's to cover existing. That seems to be what was just being discussed.
Lighting?
How much, what was, what was the potential revenue?
It was like a five, $5, 2 million, probably 2 million.
$2 million.
But then, of course, it's a matter of how we collect.
It's not, was it really revenue?
2 million would be if we affected, be, do it July 1, but I don't know if it would be July 1. It's a break-even in terms of the cost.
Yeah, well, but we're not, we're not earning anything on lighting that we install.
No, well, we, we pay SCNG at least. Jeff, where are we on the 4,000 parcels of non-taxpaying entities and how we are going to address that?
It was in the legislature question.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of struggling how to address that, because the state took a look at certain, not all 4,000 parcels, but they were taking a look at universities and hospitals. So, they, it kind of looks like that's dead.
What's preventing us from charging a fee that is more comparable to what our homeowners are having to pay?
Was that, which one, which one was?
The 4,000 parcels, tax exempt. What, what would prevent us as a city from assessing a fee to those properties that equal what our homeowners pay?
At 4% type of fee?
That, that is something we can go back to. In our discussions on that, things that we have learned, it can't be a flat fee, it has to be based on some sort of value.
Look at the, look at, look at, take this back envelope numbers and some recommendations as the formula.
Okay, that was going to be my, my question also. But does the state have a say-so on if we do that, given what they're trying to do?
Well.
They would not.
It was a local, it was a, it was a Midlands representative that proposed it.
They crammed everything, so you never know.
Yeah, so.
There was another number, as we look at these, but this, just some back of the envelope numbers, maybe just like a different formula that, that obviously passed legal muster, if we were to look at that. And I think also, we, we were looking at the Dominion buyout, if that were to come to pass, I think every day is a different story at the state capitol, what that also might mean in terms of revenue to the city as a, as a, as a rate pair.
You're talking about if they make the payment upfront?
Yeah.
I think, I think, did we get an estimate? I think we did get an estimate.
It's one time.
So, we'll, we'll look at that as well.
Obviously, it's one time, but, but I think this budget also includes a number of one-time expenses.
Yeah.
We, we need.
Anything that's capital or any one-time expenses?
Much, much, not recurring expenses, so.
We need somehow to benefit from that, plus getting more requests and complaints about dark, dark spots in the city. So, we've got to invest somehow in that cost to put up more lighting. And people are, leaving or not, honestly feel that more lighting gives them some sense of safety.
Yeah, it does.
Really do, so I, I think that's one of the best investments we can make.
We did file, right?
So, on the 15th, we'll bring you back the proposed budget. It will either be imbalanced or it will be balanced with options for city council to consider.
Okay, so, on, on the first meeting.
Probably should be.
Tameka is going to have an evening meeting, and we're going to take care of the consent agenda and some.
You're just going to have an evening meeting?
He's not going to be here.
I know, we're having an evening meeting, I'll preside.
And just take care of the light stuff to unclutter.
Because Daniel won't be here either.
There's no, there's no budget discussions planned for May 1st.
Right, we just need to verify that it'll be here so we have a forum. And Ms. Columbia, let's put her on the 15th, because that's better, everybody be here.
I know the chief has a grant, I told you, were you talking to the chief?
No, I was finished, we were just talking about the first, I was, I had asked that Ms. Columbia, I think Lauren had asked, too, that Ms. Columbia be on the agenda for May 1st, just to introduce herself and her platform, but I'd rather her on the 15th, so we can move that to the 15th.
The chief has a pending grant request, Amy Duval aggressively advanced to one of our major nonprofits on the support shot spotter, and there's some really smart precision policing using data to help us respond more effectively to gun crimes in the city. Chief of the great press conference with Sheriff Lot today as well on generally the same topic. If, in fact, the grant opportunity doesn't work out, and it should, and our partner should step up and make it happen, we do need to seriously look at, with some of the precipitous drops and gunfire that other cities are seeing speak to the value of this, and it's something we ought to be investing in either way. To talk to the chief, and at very least, let's make it a part of our discussions, and then we have to look at other parts of the city. Hopefully, we'll, we'll, our nonprofit partners will step up one way or the other and make it a reality. But we need to do it either way. It needs to be an.
Guys always, they're getting texts from me at night.
And I'll go ahead and say this to chief.
He's a free shot spotter right now.
He's what? Freak. He calls you, he calls you every day?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's real out there, man.
And the data's, the data's very real. I mean, the number of calls we get, increasing calls, obviously, the, in the reality that the vast majority of calls are never, never, shots are never reported, tells you, tells you that we, that we have a lot of issues out there. I know I sent some, some of you who I probably harassed a little more than others, Misty and Jeff, probably more than anybody else, asked for some data around schools, particularly, I'm not sure if I told you the entire story, was curious about data around gunfire in some of the zones that the proposal that the chief and Howard had presented in some of our neighborhoods, if there's some ability we had using the Gun Free Safe Schools Act, federal law, to potentially erect some of these shots by the sensors in and around some of these schools. So, just thinking again, progressively, whatever we do, I, I wouldn't be surprised if we even got some pushback from some state legislators, or even on something as smart as, as this, as we deal with this incredibly illogical pro-gun fervor at the state capitol, they seek to preempt us at every corner, every turn. But I'll follow, I'll send some follow-up emails on that, maybe to the whole council. But we, we got some, some respite in that federal law that gives us some room for some policymaking that the state legislature can't undo under preemption, under supremacy laws. And I want to talk about that a little bit more.
So, the system that we're looking at, do we get the real-time video?
No, they can't, I think they'll try.
Well, it catches the shots.
Well, yeah.
We can put some cameras.
The system I saw in Chicago is where they have a.
You get real-time GIS.
Right.
Yes, so it coordinates.
They put it on the, on the post, they have.
Yes.
And guys can do it in the car.
And officers, or phone, get it on their computer.
Right, right.
It'll be a real-time map.
I remember watching that and saw a drug pass on the street corner.
We need to get this thing done in the next month, though, so we can have it up in operational dissonance, and you'll have more shots fired than any other time. They are, they are ready to do it, they just need to get a goat.
I don't know, Skipper told y'all guys about, over there behind the bus bar, we were always getting shots fired, calls, and didn't know what was happening.
Oh, yeah.
Back up in there.
I'm talking shooting range. Sure did.
There was a shooting range back there. A lot of more men?
No.
No.
River Rutledge, behind Rutledge.
But I don't think it was associated with him.
Was it sportsmen or, or, really?
I thought it was Rutledge.
Yeah, sportsmen, yeah. That is a sport.
Urban sportsmen. I mean, they were, they were shacking it, man.
We would get calls, like, shots every night, and nobody could figure out what was happening, what was going on, and thanks to the great work our officers did and making friends with folks down there and going to look, and they came up with a farm shooting range. So, are we done now?
We're done.
Yeah.
If we don't get lunch. Sure.
I'm not going anywhere, I got a 12:30 upstairs.
Well, I got a 3:30, so get your meeting finished.
If I'm still there at 3:30, I hope somebody.
Three-hour meeting.
Clean my, clear my afternoon, because I thought we were going to be all day, that's pretty good, okay.
We just moved right along while you looked.
Are we done?